Planning Board and the Transportation Commission for July 19th, 2021. We do appear to have a quorum of both bodies. If you would please call the role for the Transportation Policy and Planning Board.
Grant Foster. Heath Furman.
Present.
Barbara Harrington McKinney. Randy Udo.
Here.
Christopher McHale.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
Here.
Altazar Deanna Santana. Margaret Bergamini.
Present.
And Badri Lankala.
Here.
Thank you. The Transportation Policy and Planning Board does have a quorum. TC Chair Crouch.
Yes, I call the Transportation Commission for July 19th, 2021 to order. And Patrick, would you please call a roll?
Charles Miazzi. Barbara Harrington McKinney. Chris McHale.
Here.
Ann Kovac.
Here.
Denise Jess. Denise, you just muted yourself.
Thanks, Patrick. I'm here.
Yes, okay. Bill Bremer.
Here.
Ken Stride. Richard Brown.
Yeah.
Carl Kleens.
Here.
Thank you very much, Joe. If you'd like to read the instructions, please.
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is, all those commission and board members and staff have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. Need to share documentation with the body presented to the email as fanciful as it ended up. Chairs, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Joe. We do have one registrant for public comment. John Becker, Madison, Wisconsin. John, I see you on our list of attendees. If you're ready, you have three minutes. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair. This is John. I am going to read what I sent by email. I request that Madison's Transportation Planning and Policy Board postpone delayed September or early October the scheduled July 21 public meeting and August 2 public hearing on Madison Metro's report about future bus rapid transit or metro system fare options. This will allow fuller community input regarding the fare free transit option and related staff recommendations. As City's transportation staff pointed out at the June TPP meeting, fare-related meetings are never held during the summer months. Staff also affirmed that these fare sessions could instead be held in September, October, or even later. Also, just last week, the city added two virtual town meetings about our federal funds and the 2022 city budget to be held on July 22 and 27, and those will include transportation issues. All this comes on top of concerns regarding public input into BRT routing options, which have dominated the media coverage for weeks. Last, the July 21 TPP meeting on fares, two days from now, was not announced on Sunday's Wisconsin State Journal. Any summer transit public input sessions that can be held later this year should be postponed. I sent this comment because we requested that at the last TPP, at a June TPP meeting, and members kindly asked staff all these questions about how late the session could be run instead, and staff agreed that it could be held in September, October. But then, for some reason, the TPPB voted unanimously to continue forward, withholding them in July and August. But since then, we've had all this uproar about state street routing. We also are trying to have citizen input into the new metro classic rerouting study by JWA. This is a lot for unpaid public members of the community who are transportation interested to attend to. We are not paid, of course, the six figures that staff are. We have to also consult experts. I've actually tried to reach two of ours this summer already, and I'm working with a third, and all of them are unable to be responsive during the summer. I'm wondering how late these sessions could be held, and I wish staff or TPPB would explain why we have to do them in July or August, on top of all the stress that is being incurred right now by staff members and the mayor in regards to state street. I would like to mention also that we had assaults on drivers these past few weeks, and that affects retention and recruitment for drivers. I hear there are problems with that. We do have, from the pilot fare-free transit studies or programs in LA, news that driver assaults dropped to near zero from 40% of all assaults that are based on fares, once they piloted their fare-free programs. So these are relevant issues that should be discussed in terms of current events in Madison. We request that city staff meet with us. We put a request for that meeting out in September of last year after delays in our proposal for a study of fare-free transit in spring of 2020. We still haven't heard from staff about when they're going to meet with us regarding the fare study that they put out.
If you could please wrap up.
We have found that there are deficiencies in that report. We would like to discuss them with staff before this goes much further. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Are there any communications disclosures or recusals from members of the board or the commission? Seeing none. Our first item this evening is Legisdar 66381, Metro Transit Redesign Preview of Ridership and Coverage Maps.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, everybody. Mike Chekvala, I'm a transportation planner with the city's transportation department. As many of you know, I'd like to reintroduce Daniel Costantino from Jarrett Walker and Associates. Daniel has presented to at least the TPPB in the past. The Transit Network redesign is a three-phase project that ultimately redesigned Metro's transit network from the ground up. Phase one, which was the last time that they talked to you, was talking about the general trade-offs, especially concerning ridership-oriented maps versus coverage-oriented maps. And then, since then, we've been working on drawing alternative maps for Madison, which demonstrates those trade-offs. So Daniel's here to talk to you about that, and he will need to share his screen. I told him that that would happen. So with that, I'll pass it off to Daniel, unless there are any immediate questions. Daniel, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. I was just waiting to see if there were any questions. Hi, I'm Daniel Costantino. I'm here today with my colleague, Christopher UN, as well as Marcus Pearson from Urban Assets. We're all on the consultant team for the Metro Transit Network redesign. I'm the project manager for that team. And if you've got any questions about what we're doing, you should feel free to contact me. I work for Jarrett Walker and Associates. We are a firm that focuses specifically on transit network redesign projects, and we're delighted to be working in Madison. In terms of why are we specifically here today? When we talk about a transit network, what we're really talking about is where and how often the bus runs. And so the transit network redesign is really a reevaluation of that. Where and how often should the bus run? And anytime you're asking that question, you're going to immediately butt into some key trade-offs. And one of the most important ones is whether it's more important for service to be frequent and direct enough that it's very convenient and very useful and gets a whole lot of, well, as much ridership as is possible, or whether it's more important for transit to be available very near to as many people and places as possible, so that anyone who might possibly need it could be able to use it, at least in theory. And so we have been working along with city and metro staff for the last couple of months to show people what that trade-off really looks like in Madison. Mike referred to phase one, wherein we talked about these things kind of in theory. We ask people questions in theory, but you know, if you want really to know what people actually think, it's good to show them the consequences of this in the real world. And so what you're going to get today is a preview of that. Now, just a quick review of what we mean by this trade-off, which we call the ridership versus coverage trade-off. So imagine you're in this town that's portrayed in this image on the left here. The gray lines on this image are streets. You can see they kind of whiz all over the place in this town. The dots are people and jobs, and you can see there are two main roads in particular that have a lot of people and jobs near them. And then there's a bunch of other dots that are kind of scattered throughout the map, but maybe at lower densities. If you wanted to serve, strictly speaking, a ridership goal to get as much useful service out there as possible, the logical thing to do would be, as a transit agency, would be to run all your buses on those two main roads, where there are a lot of people and jobs nearby, because that way, the bus would come very often on these streets, and people could use them without waiting a long time. It'd be very convenient. But when you do that kind of thing, there are some obvious problems. First one is that there are still a whole lot of people that are far from service, and generally, transit is viewed as a public service, and it's not usually acceptable for transit to be far away from many, many people. And the other thing is, depending on where people with various needs or abilities may be located, in this scenario, you may not be serving the people who need it the most. So if you wanted to solve that problem of being closer to everyone, what you might do instead is try to serve a coverage goal. And if you were focused specifically in this same town, just on a coverage goal, what you would then do is basically run a bus down almost every street that's wide enough to handle a bus, and that would get you some service close to almost everyone. But when you do that, when you spread service out like that, you spread service thin, which means that the bus isn't coming very often. People have to wait a long time, and then it's not very convenient to most people. Both goals are very important, right? You can't really do just one or the other as a public service, and both goals serve objectives that are both reasonable and popular. If you want to do something about congestion or about pollution or about useful access via transit, you want to be looking at a ridership goal. If you want to provide insurance against isolation to every area and every district in Madison, you want to be looking at a coverage goal, which means that everyone is constantly pulling Metro Transit in both directions at the same time. But you can't use the same dollar to pay for a frequent and direct bus route or a different kind of, where you have many routes that are infrequent and kind of circuitous to go everywhere. So what we're going to show today is either end of the spectrum, basically, as is in Madison, and then what we're going to try to be hearing from is which direction do people lean more towards, not because we think that either of these alternatives is better, but because, or that either one of them is going to be perfectly acceptable to a majority of the public, because we want to know where people lean and what Metro Transit should be doing most of. So I've been showing you these images of this fictional town. That's fine and good. Let's look a little bit about what the ridership and coverage drivers are in Madison. So the most important thing that drives high ridership is there being many people near places, and that means density. And so this here is a map of job and residential density in Madison, where blue means people, yellow means jobs, and red means a lot of people and a lot of jobs. And it's really clear right away that you have the highest densities by far in central Madison, kind of through the Isthmus, around campus, and then a little bit south of downtown as well. So what that tells you is that a ridership network is going to really focus a lot on providing really good service in those areas and to and from those areas. And that's further reinforced when you think about where people live who might use transit a lot. And if you look at a map of where there are a lot of zero-vehicle households in Madison, like we're doing right now, you can see that those are also very much concentrated in the center of town, which is all fine and good, except even though the highest densities are in the center, that doesn't actually mean that most people live in the center. In fact, at most, by the broadest possible definition of the center of Madison, maybe that's a third of people. So there are people scattered all over the city and even further beyond. And anywhere that appears in blue on this map of population density is a neighborhood with, you know, a fair number of people who live in an urban or suburban environment and might have some reasonable expectation of transit service nearby. And when we look at job distribution, we can see that although, yes, the highest densities are in the center, there's also a lot, a lot of jobs that aren't in the center, and specifically kind of all around the periphery of Madison. If you can follow the Belt Line, kind of from west to east, there's this arc of jobs. So there are reasons to focus on ridership, reasons to focus on coverage. And so far, I've just talked about ridership and coverage, and you may think that, you know, that's all fine and good, but equity matters a lot in Madison, and how does equity fit in here? So let's look at some measures of equity. And when we talk about equity, we're really talking about, you know, the needs of marginalized people, and how do we know where people who are marginalized for various reasons, be it economics or ability or history, are located? We don't have great measures of this, but we have a couple of measures that we look at. One of them is income, and where are there many people with low incomes? And so there's two things to know about where there are people with low incomes in Madison. The first is that the biggest concentration of people with low incomes by a fair margin is again in central Madison and around the university. But that needs to be tempered against the fact that a lot of the poverty that we can see in central Madison is related to the university. It's related to the fact that there are many, many students, and to some measure, some just young adults in general, who, some of them, some of whom, you know, may have grown up poor, but a lot of these people are poor temporarily. Right now, they're not working full-time. They're spending the energy at this stage in their life to get a degree or do whatever it is they're doing at this moment, but that doesn't say much about whether these people are necessarily highly disadvantaged to start with. But the other thing to look at on this map is this, again, this kind of band of areas around the edge of the city. There is a range of peripheral neighborhoods, and they are on all sides, on the south, on the southwest, a little bit in the east and the north as well, where there are significant concentrations of people in poverty. And those are the areas that are circled in red on this map. And what's interesting about those areas is that if you look at them against a map of where people of color live in Madison, there is a lot of correlation between poverty density in peripheral areas and people of color. And so what that tells us is that there are these areas on the periphery of Madison where most of Madison's disadvantaged communities of color live. And within those communities, people, whether they are of color or not, are a lot more likely to be experiencing long-term or generational poverty. And so when we're talking about equity, those are kind of areas that we spent more time focusing on. And when we looked at these alternatives, we designed them with ridership in mind and with coverage in mind, but also with equity in mind. Another quick thing to say, from a ridership perspective, it's very difficult to serve the edges of Madison, because most of the peripheral areas of Madison weren't designed with transit in mind, or at least not at the front of the mind. There's a lot of areas that are bisected by freeways, where it's very difficult to run a bus on a long, straight line with a lot of stuff on both sides, so that it can be frequent and serve many people and places. And so these are just aerial images of a variety of different places that are hard to serve, either because the roads aren't straight, or because there is a freeway, or because there's a lot of cul-de-sacs, or all of the above, really. So that's kind of the shape of our problem. Now I want to talk to you about our alternatives. And before I show you all our alternatives, I do want to talk to you about a couple of things that structure and limit what the alternatives can be. Here, the first thing that's worth knowing is that, of course, both alternatives, ridership and coverage, take the Bus Rapid Transit Project as a given. Planning on the BRT has been going on for years, particularly the East-West BRT. There's been a lot of work done on alignment, as was alluded to by the public commenter earlier. And so this is very important. And in fact, if there weren't the BRT project, one could wonder whether there would be as much impetus for a network redesign in the first place. So we've assumed the BRT will happen. We've assumed particularly the East-West BRT will mostly focus the alignment that's on the alignment that's on this map, without getting into very specific details, but that's generally the notion. And then we've assumed that also the North-South BRT is definitely happening, although we also have assumed that we have some flexibility in helping to define where the North-South BRT may go. Other thing to know, these are not alternatives designed with an infinite budget. Metro Transit, to our knowledge, is planning to go back in the next couple of years to 2019 pre-pandemic service levels, which is more than is running right now. But there are certain limits to how much service that was even at that point. So that's the total budget that we're coming in with, the pre-pandemic level of service, which means that in designing these alternatives, anytime we were having a discussion about whether there should be more service in one place, we had to bear in mind that that meant less service in some other place. And that's important also when you consider the BRT, because running a frequent BRT on the East-West and North-South corridor will cost a certain amount of Metro's operating resources, and does mean that there's certain other things that might not have been possible. Last thing to know, before I show you the maps, both alternatives we're going to show you have been designed to be realistic and operable with Metro Transit planning and operations staff. In theory, you could tell Metro today, go do this, and in, you know, six months or nine months, they could run it. That's obviously not what's going to happen, but they've been designed to be as realistic as possible, so people know what to take and what the real consequences are. At the same time, neither of these alternatives are actually a recommendation. The whole point is to show what are the extremes of what might be possible perhaps in, or what might be acceptable, I want to say, in Madison. This is all very technically possible, but these show the extremes of what might be acceptable. But both alternatives can and probably should generate strong reactions in people who might think otherwise. So in the next phase of outreach, we're going to show these alternatives and get people to react to them. Tell us which way they're leaning. Tell us what's wrong. Tell us what's missing. So here is a map of the existing network, the existing Metro Transit network as it's been running throughout most of the pandemic. And on this map, you'll notice that we have the city of Madison and its streets and lakes, et cetera. And the bus routes are shown in a few colors. And I want to point out particularly the red colors, which means that the bus is frequent and comes every 15 minutes or less. And you can see that there's not a whole lot of that, mostly it's service on campus. You'll notice that most of this map are routes that are in kind of a dark or heavily saturated blue. Those are routes that run every 30 minutes. And then there's a number of areas that are on routes that are in light blue, and that's buses that come once an hour. When I say every 15, every 30 once an hour, I mean, they come at that frequency throughout basically most of the day on weekdays, in some cases, all the way till midnight. There's also another color. It might be a little harder to see. There's this kind of light gold-gray color that permeates in various areas, and that is harder to see on purpose, because those are the routes that Metro Transit runs that are only available at certain times, like on the peak or in certain limited cases on weekends only or evening only. And so those are drawn in that style on purpose, because there's not a whole lot of service in those places. And so you might have to squint a little to see them here, much as how in real life, if you were in those areas, you might have to squint a little to realize that there is service here, even though there is something. This is the existing network, and I'm going to start by showing you the alternative that is most radical and most different, which is the ridership alternative. I'm going to go back and forth a few times and then explain a little bit about what you're seeing. So here's the existing network, and here's the ridership alternative. Existing network. Ridership alternative. So when you compare these two maps, there's a couple of things that should be very obvious very quickly. The first one is probably that, boy, there sure are fewer routes on this ridership map than there are in the existing network. And that's true. And actually, if you squint, you'll notice that there are still a whole bunch of these routes that are operating in the peak only, and so many of the areas that are served right now would continue to be served, but just not at many times. There are a lot of places that would be farther from service, you know, in this alternative. On the other hand, what you get for this is that about half of the network would run every 15 minutes or better on weekdays until 8:00 PM. So you'd get much, much higher frequencies. And so in terms of your all-day service, instead of your, you know, your service almost all running every 30 minutes, you get about half running every 15 and half running every 30. The other thing to notice is that there are no transfer points on this map. If you follow any one route, so this is the A, the East-West BRT, the B, the North-South BRT that we have running all the way from the north side all the way down to Fishatory Road, or even one of the more secondary routes like the E, you'll notice that it doesn't go through any transfer points. There are places to transfer between routes, but what we've really focused is on direct travel, routes that go in relatively straight paths across a lot of Madison, which, to reduce the number of transfers that are being forced to get to downtown Madison or to various important destinations. So all those things work together to produce a system in which it would be possible to travel through Madison much more directly, even though you might have to walk farther to get to a bus. That's the ridership alternative. Now I'm going to show you the coverage alternative. So here's the ridership. Here's coverage. Ridership. Coverage. Ridership. Coverage. And so now, looking at the coverage map, you'll see, oh, hey, look, all those lines came back, or at least a lot of them did. In the coverage alternative, what we really focused on was providing all-day service as close to as many people as possible, which means that we didn't necessarily get service, the lines on this map, to be exactly the same routes that exist today. They might not be on exactly the same street. People's individual bus stops might move, but there is service within a quarter mile of as many, if not slightly more, people all day than there is today on this map. And so what you can see here is, again, the A, BRT East-West. That's a basic assumption. We clipped the North-South BRT compared to the other alternative, to be just South Transfer Point to North Transfer Point, as a frequent route would continue north less frequently. And the rest of the network is more like today's network, every 30 to 60 minutes, with some modifications to get as close to as many people as possible. So that's what the networks do. Well, that's what they look like. Let's talk about what they do. So there's two measures of outcomes that I want to discuss with you and that we're going to be showing the public. The first one's proximity, which is pretty simple. How many people are within a quarter-mile walk of a bus stop? This is a good measure of coverage, and it tells us whether there's some level of insurance against isolation in people's neighborhoods. It doesn't tell us if the service is of any use, though. And here's just a quick note. When we're talking about all these things, we're almost always talking about things that are happening in the weekday, in the middle of the day. So we know that in both alternatives, just as in service today, because we're looking at a 2019 budget and not an infinite budget, there would continue to be probably more service at peak times and less service on weekends and evenings than in the middle of the day on weekdays. So anyway, in terms of on weekdays in the daytime, this is a chart that shows you how often the bus comes in the existing network. Same colors we saw earlier. Red is frequent every 15 minutes, dark blue every 30, light blue every 60. And then the other two colors are either kind of a service that doesn't come much or no service at all. And you can see that there's about 80% of people and 90% of jobs that are within a quarter mile of service in the existing network today. In the ridership alternative, existing ridership, the number of people near any service would go down. The number of people near all-day service would go from about 80% to about 67%. But at the same time, you can notice that the red bar on the left, which is the number of people and jobs near frequent service, moves a lot. We would almost quadruple the number of residents near frequent service in the ridership alternative. In the coverage alternative, we're maintaining about 80% of people near all-day transit service, and we are slightly expanding the number of people near frequent service. You see that there are 27% of people of residence near frequent service compared to 11% today. And so basically, today is the situation where there's only frequent service on campus. Coverage is just the BRT, and ridership is if we can get frequent service to more places than just BRT. So that's proximity in general, but how do we do on equity? So when we look at these measures for people of color and people with low incomes, here's where they are in the existing network, and here's where they are in the ridership alternative. And you can see that essentially, the direction of change is the same. Fewer people near all-day service, a lot more people near frequent service. Same thing with coverage. About the same number of people near any service and more people near frequent service than there are today. That's proximity. Second key outcome we want to talk about is access to jobs within 45 minutes. And the reason we look at access to jobs is because we're trying to figure out how much more useful would the network be? Because if a transit system isn't useful, it can't generate ridership. Of course, in the short term, there's a whole lot of other reasons why transit may or may not attract ridership, reasons that are cultural, economic, et cetera. But at base, if you want ridership, you have to provide a product that has some value and some usefulness specifically. So we measure access to places. And honestly, the best measure we have And honestly, the best measure we have of places that are useful to go to is jobs. It's not a universal measure, but we know that a lot of the places people need to go to, even if they are not their jobs, are places where jobs are located, like retail, like medical, like even places of worship, someone works there, right? So there's places that people need to go. So we've looked at access to jobs within 45 minutes to figure out how much more useful the service get. Or would service get? And when we say within 45 minutes, I want to emphasize that we're not just talking about how much time you spend on the bus. Fact is, that probably wouldn't change that much, because the buses go at the speeds they can in traffic. But what matters a lot as a transit rider is not just the time you're on the bus, but the time you spend walking to go to a bus stop and the time you spend waiting at the bus stop. And the time you spend walking and waiting during transfers, and maybe even the time you spend waiting when you get there, because maybe you had to show up early, because the bus doesn't come very often. So what we do is we calculate walk distances and wait times based on frequencies. And that tells us today versus this alternative, how much better or worse does it get? So here's a quick map of what the ridership concept was, and next I'm going to show you a map of access change. So on this map, green means job access within 45 minutes gets higher. Pink means job access gets worse, it decreases in 45 minutes. And of course, the immediate thing you can see is that this map is overwhelmingly green, which might seem contradictory because of how there are fewer routes on this map. But generally speaking, when people spend less time waiting, that gets more travel time gain than the slightly longer walks they might have to do. And so what you end up having here is a situation where a few areas might see losses, but the vast majority of areas might see gains. And that's fine, but are these actually the areas that need to be served? And so of course, we know from elections that areas don't vote, people vote. So how does this match Madison's population distribution? On this map, we've basically changed these hex shapes to have to be dots. And the number of dots, the density of dots here tells you whether there are a lot of people or few people in any one area. And you can see again, that the vast majority of people in Madison would have more access to jobs by transit in the ridership alternative. A few people would have lower access, particularly in this one little pocket in the southwest, little pocket here out east. But on average, the average, the median resident of Madison, their job access would more than double by transit in 45 minutes. And that's also true of people of color. It's less true, it'd be plus 30% or plus 28% for people with low incomes. But again, that's because they're very concentrated in this central area as a population, which means they already have pretty high access. So that's ridership. For coverage, how do we impact people's access within 45 minutes? Here's the same map, green means increased job access, pink means decreased. And you can see that in the coverage map, most of the map is also still green, although there are more areas that show up in pink, more areas where there is a decrease. And why is that? Well, when you compare the map of where service would be here to the map of where there would be improvements in job access, you can see that a lot of the job access improvements in the coverage alternative are really purely related to the east-west and north-south BRTs. Not all of them, but a lot of them are. And a lot of other places where there isn't BRT, job access may have improved slightly, or it may have declined because, for various reasons, because we're trying to get as close to as many people as possible, some areas would see slightly lower frequencies than they do now. So now here is the same map, but for people. And so you can again see most people positively impacted, more people negatively impacted in job access terms within 45 minutes than in ridership. But again, about a 40% increase overall, similar for all residents versus people of color, and a smaller, again, improvement for people with low incomes, for the same reasons that we mentioned earlier. So in summary, in the ridership alternative, you'd have 67% of residents within a quarter-mile walk of all-day service. But the average Madison resident could access more than twice as many jobs by transit in 45 minutes as they could today. In the coverage alternative, you'd have about 80% of residents within a quarter-mile walk of all-day service. But the job access improvement would only be about plus 38% compared to today. In equity terms, in both alternatives, people of color and people with low incomes would benefit at similar rates to the population in general. Although in percentage terms, people with low incomes would benefit relatively less, because that population is very weighted towards the city center. The ridership alternative, important to say, would more than double the jobs that people of color can reach compared to the coverage alternative, which would only increase that by, I'm sorry, that's a typo. I believe it is 40, not 28. So a few things we know are not being resolved by this alternatives, and that are, these alternatives that are important to acknowledge. Because service would remain at 2019 levels, neither of these alternatives significantly expands the total range of the bus network in Madison, right? We're still looking at, you know, getting to about 80% of people within a quarter-mile, even in the coverage alternative. And that's simply a question of how much farther can you expect Metro Transit to go within its current, within the service budget that, you know, it's had historically. Other thing that's true is that we've designed these alternatives on the assumption that evening and weekend service would remain about 40% lower than it's been on weekdays. That's been true historically. That doesn't mean that staff or we as consultants believe that that's the right thing to do. It is to provide people with an adequate comparison with the existing network. It is a question we are going to ask in the next phase of outreach, though, whether within that existing budget, it would be worth reducing weekday service levels to get better service in the evenings and weekends. So we're going to ask three key questions in this next phase of outreach. One is really which alternative is closer to the way that you might be leaning? Another one is, you know, within that alternative, what's missing or wrong about it that seems important? And finally, whether, when we get to the draft plan phase, should we be shifting resources to the evenings and weekends, even if that means less service and lower frequencies on weekdays? So here's where we're at in terms of the project. As Mac mentioned, we've completed phase one, we had the choices report back in March, had a first phase of public involvement. And now we're getting into phase two, this alternatives report, everything I've showed you today will be in the alternatives report, which will be out, I believe, in another couple of weeks. And all this material will serve as the basis for the next phase of public outreach through August and September. Where we're going to be asking people, you know, which way they're leaning. And we'll use the outputs of that to inform you, TPPB, about which way we should, which way we should go in designing the draft plan. And based on that public output and your policy direction, in the fall, the intention is to design a draft plan for the future. With that, thank you very much for your time and attention, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Daniel. We do have one registrant for public comment for this item. We have Arturo Bonomi, I hope I pronounced that last name correctly, 4506 Woods End, Madison, Wisconsin. Neither in support nor opposed, wishing to speak. Arturo, are you there?
Yeah, I can hear you. You guys hear me okay?
Excellent, we can. So you've got three minutes, please go ahead when you're ready.
All right, perfect. Hey, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate the time. The head varsity football coach for Madison West High School. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up to your attention was that, while I appreciate a lot of the information that I'm learning here today, I'd like to highlight what I consider to be a significant issue that our community is having regarding equity and access to transportation by our students. Over the last six years, as a football coach, I've noticed that the participation for kids of color, African-American, Latino in Madison West High School has significantly decreased, sometimes due to inability to access the transportation out of Madison West High School after school activities. School typically gets done sometime around 3:30 to 4 o'clock in the afternoon. And all after-school activities, whether it is after-school programs or sports in general, are happening later in the afternoon into the evening. The amount of time that it takes a lot of our athletes to get back to home, especially to transfer points like Leopold and South Park Street, is averaging anywhere between an hour and a half, two hours, 45 minutes. Which makes it almost impossible for them to be able to get home on a reasonable time if they're living at practice or one of these activities around 7:30 at night and getting home almost around 9:00, 9:15 at night, and then having to eat dinner, do their homework. So what we would like to do is highlight this issue around, how can we provide a lot of these kids who are participating in after-school programs, especially in sports programs, the opportunity to have that equity and the same opportunity that others have to be able to go to school and from school back home in a way that is safe, but also that allows them the opportunity to save time to focus on the right things. I think it goes without saying that there is a significant benefit in the participation of youth in not only in collegiate activities and sports. We can talk about those, you know, throughout time. My goal here today is to bring this issue to your attention, be able to share a lot more information that we have, not only about the benefits, but also the low numbers of participation that we're seeing at West in after-school programs and in sports. I really don't know which one of the two alternatives that we just reviewed will likely impact that portion. But I do think we need to start measuring success by how are these routes, these changes affecting our schools? Because our kids are not working. They need to go to school in the morning, and they need to be able to get home after school or after participating in school, in after-school activities or sports in a day-to-day basis. That's all I have.
Thank you, Arturo. Any questions for our speaker? Margaret, I see your hand up, please go ahead.
Yes, thanks for coming and speaking today. Quick question for you, and I'll ask the question of the presenter when it's appropriate to do so. But I am curious, I know that we run bus routes specifically designed for serving the high schools before and after school. I know that they don't run that late after a football game. Is the school district doing anything to provide bus service specifically for after-school programming that you're aware of?
No, that I'm aware of. Right now, I think we have direct shots or shorter routes that are immediately after school. But anytime after 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, there are no longer direct shots back to some of those transfer points. Which means some of the kids are spending an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes transferring in buses, getting back home. So there is nothing that I can think of or have heard of provided by the school district or MSER that is addressing that gap. I know it has been part of the conversations that we've had in terms of equity and efforts that we have within our athletic department. And I know this is one of the steps of bringing awareness towards that issue.
And what happens, for example, when your teams are playing away games? How are your teams being transported?
And that is a really good question. Understanding the infrastructure that we have in Madison West, we don't have the larger facilities that, for example, Madison Memorial, Olafala, and Madison East has. And for example, we do not have a football stadium, so we play all our games at Mansfield Stadium, which is at Madison Memorial, for example. Or our track and field teams do not practice at West. We're taking kids that go from West into Mansfield. So right now, we don't have a very cohesive, you know, transportation solution to some of those areas, especially once you get into that after, you know, 5, 6 o'clock in the afternoon. It becomes really a challenging position for coaches and for the school, because we're trying to do everything we can to follow policies and get the kids back home in a safe way. And oftentimes, that is, you know, is prevented by the district simply because, you know, liability issues that you might run into in transporting students.
Okay, and I think I'll hold a follow-up question about school routes for after other people having a chance to ask you questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Aldra Figueroa Cole.
Yes, I mean, Arturo, if you could please share with the rest of the group your latest experiences on trying to, for kids that are using Uber or Lyft to get to, you know, that are really into the games and they're doing everything they can to get into these programs. Can you share a little bit about that experience with the rest of the team? I mean, really, I I appreciate that your intent here to create awareness, and I appreciate a little bit more detail on that.
Yeah, there were a couple of instances this spring where, you know, as a track and field head coach, I noticed that there were several of our athletes who were taking Ubers and Lyfts from home to stadiums and to track and field practices, simply because they just didn't have access to transportation. Now, taking into consideration of the fact that the last year and a half has been very different, we've had a mixture between, you know, online and Zoom, you know, virtual schooling. But the reality is that, you know, past certain times during the day on a day-to-day basis, and I believe that is somewhere between 4:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon, kids don't have a direct access to transportation that would get them to this after-school programs or from the after-school programs of sports back home. So they are forced to A, rely on someone giving them a ride back home, or B, have to pay for a taxi or Lyft or an Uber to be able to get to and from practice. And as you can imagine, that, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of money that goes into accumulating that, especially if you're playing a sport in which you're practicing every day. And again, I think something that is very important that I want everybody to understand, listen, we recognize that I think we're not the only school dealing with this type of issues. And we understand that what we're talking about equity is a process in which we're all working together. So again, I go back to my principal concern, which is awareness, right? Understanding that there is an issue and trying to find, you know, we want to find creative and disruptive type of solutions that would allow us short and long-term possibilities to give kids, you know, a chance to be able to participate in this program.
Thank you, Arturo, and thank you for being here and sharing that with us. Are there any additional questions for the speaker? Okay, seeing none, questions for our presenter? Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess just a question regarding those last comments, that last comment about access to schools. And I know we also got some written comment about access to parks. So I mean, I imagine we could look at that by, if there were key destinations, we could look at access to population from a list of key destinations. So I'm just wondering if that's something that you ever incorporated into the planning process?
Yes, and in fact, this alternatives report will come with an appendix with maps that show basically from a variety of locations within Madison where you could get to in 45 minutes in either alternative compared to where you can get to today. So we do, I mean, as we do network planning, we look at a whole broad variety of possible destinations. And so the job density I showed, that's really just, that's probably one of the biggest inputs, but it's by no means the only one. We certainly, you know, took into consideration locations of schools, locations of parks, many other places that might generate some trips. I will say that, to some extent, you know, we are, anytime we're doing that, modulating against how many trips and how regular are those trips that are being generated? Which means that something like parks, for example, might get a little bit less attention in a ridership-specific concept, because although everyone likes going to parks, people will go there, you know. People will go far enough to a park to take a bus, you know, maybe once a week versus an activity that they might be, you know, engaging in most days, like working or going to school or coming home from a practice or things like that.
Thanks. One more, and then I'll let someone else ask a question. So I think folks are going to be kind of surprised that even in the coverage scenario, there are areas that lose service. And I have some hunches as to why that is, but could you just speak to that a little bit and maybe explain how you would sort of preempt those concerns as we're going through these exercises with folks?
Sure. There are a couple of things to keep in mind about that. One is that we were very much focused on areas and not specific streets or specific bus stops. Which means that in some cases, it's not so much that the area isn't served as that the bus might not be on the same street, or it might not go, you know, in exactly the same direction that it goes right now. But we were very careful to stay in as many areas as possible. The second is about, you know, why isn't there more expansion? And to be honest, that's simply a question of resources. We're not, again, we're not designing these alternatives in a vacuum of resources. We have the resources that were available in 2019. We have the resources that were available in twenty nineteen, but we're also paying for the operations of a frequent BRT service that has never existed before, which means that we simply don't have a good way to get to all the areas that are being currently served, um, or to expand those areas without, um, you know, providing service that you could barely describe as all day service. So we've tried to get service at least once an hour, close to as many people as possible.
Thanks, that's all.
All right, um, Harold, you're up next, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I think you might have, um, answered part of my question, but I do wanna, and this might actually be a question for Metro staff. I mean, can we be a little bit more specific? I mean, your slide says that the Met, the BRT budget is taking up a substantial part of the budget that you then have to work around. And I mean, I think this is something that a lot of people have voiced concern over. Like, yeah, BRT sounds great, but is it going to be at the cost of local service, of coverage and whatever? So I think being explicit what we're talking about, like how much of the operating budget is used up by BRT? I think that would be good to know, and I'm not sure if you have an immediate answer to that.
I, I can, I can take that one if that's okay. So I, I guess the short answer is that, um, the BRT is planned to be less than five percent of our total metros, of all of Metro's budget. Keep in mind, we do have, uh, a lot of service or quite a bit of service in much of that corridor already. Um, and so for the most part, we're repurposing dollars and hours that are already in that corridor. Um, but there certainly, there are some places where we are expanding service primarily outside of the downtown core. Um, and, and that does, you know, draw some additional resources into that corridor. But, um, but, but overall, just for a sense of scale, it's less than five percent of our total budget.
Okay, I did it so well, and, yeah, go ahead.
You mean, Justin, when you say the five percent, you mean that's the addition?
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're correct. Yeah, we, we, we're making sure that we're keeping the increment less than five percent. So I misspoke there, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I guess I don't have the, the total percentage of our budget, uh, in my head. Daniel, you may.
I, um, I think I would, uh, I think we can provide that after the meeting. It's a little bit different in either alternative. So it depends on what specific assumptions we make about the BRT, but it is a substantial chunk.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you can provide that answer, I think that would be really, I, I'm sure I'm not going to be the only one who asks that question. I have one other question that I think one of the public commenters asked that. Like, I mean, I've seen these bus network redesigns previously in other cities where like also have like these before and after maps where you have like this tangled mess on one side and like the nice straight lines on the other hand. It seems like with the Madison network, you still have a lot of like these secureness routes that like suddenly change direction, go from one street like they run to okay here, and then they move over to Budana, then they move somewhere else. Can you maybe comment on, I mean, is this just Madison's different? Or is it because of goals that we're having where we're, as you have described, we're trying to serve as many as possible, um, current bus riders?
Um, the short answer to that is that outside of the central areas of Madison, you don't have a lot of long straight streets. You have a lot of curvy roads and you have a lot of roads that are interrupted at freeways. And even in, uh, a very ridership oriented concept, you get past a certain point in Madison and you have to squiggle a little because there's literally no other way through that actually, uh, gets you, uh, a bus stop near, you know, the major destinations. So, um, you know, that's, that is really the geometry of your built environment. And that goes back to that slide I was showing where peripheral areas aren't built for transit. Um, and so we are trying to serve that as directly as possible, um, while also providing, you know, opportunities to travel, um, all the way across town and to make relevant connections along the way.
Thank you, and one final quick one. So the maps are not showing stop locations right now, but obviously to do the calculation of who has access, you need to know where the stops are. Can you comment on that, please?
Yes, the basic assumption is that the stops are in the same locations that they are now to the extent we're running on the same streets. To the extent we're running on different streets, I believe, um, it's a stop every, you know, at a similar intervals to what you have right now, the locations are somewhat hypothetical.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I've seen quite a few hands go up and down, um, as the questions have been answered. So hopefully, questions are being answered or points are being made. Alder Harington McKinnon, you're up next, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for this presentation. Um, yeah. I heard, um, uh, equity woven into the presentation quite a bit and talking about, um, densities, employment and, uh, access to destinations like parks and, um, and even getting to, uh, sports events. Um, my question is in what I've observed in some communities, uh, many communities is that, um, uh, parents are having to leave home and drop off, uh, to childcare, then get back on the bus and then, you know, go to employment. Is there any way that that is measured or looked at? Or it just gets, um, kind of down too far in, in, in the weeds?
So I don't think that we have data good enough to tell us, you know, that, that, that a good enough, that a precise enough to tell us in any reliable way, where are there people doing these exact things every day? Um, we do know where there are a lot of people. We can, we do know, actually, we have mapped in the choices report where there's a lot of, uh, children, people under eighteen. And so that gives us, you know, some measure of understanding of where there are childcare related needs. And certainly outside of central Madison, those do tend to be a little bit higher in lower income communities, um, on average. Um, what I will say about that is that if you think in terms of someone whose life is relatively complicated and they have a lot of different needs and a lot of different places they have to get to in a day, the key thing that's going to make a difference probably if they really rely on transit to get around is how often the bus comes. And so the more often the bus comes, the less time they find themselves randomly waiting an hour on a corner because, you know, something happened and they ended up three minutes late, right? And so that's, um, that's, yeah, that's basically the key thing I can tell you about that and how, how, how we would think about it.
All right, Aldra Figueroa Cole, um, you're up next, please go ahead.
Um, thank you. So I just have a very, a couple of very simple questions because I'm, I'm, can't get my head around them. So on this slide, on that first slide that you started the presentation with, explaining, I think it's page six, seven, eight, explaining this is like, you know, an example of, um, this visual world where we have eighteen buses. So, um, I, I just can't connect the dots between, in, in that scenario, out of those eighteen buses, how many are metro buses versus rapid transit buses? And am I thinking about that correctly at this, there's a separation between the two?
So, um, in this, should have very simplified hypothetical example, they're all metro buses and there's no BRT project. It's just an example, they all, they all belong to, you know, whatever the city's transit agency is. Um, it's just a question of where they're allocated. And that's the point that this is trying to make is that if you were focusing, um, exclusively on a ridership goal at the expense of everything else, you would put all eighteen buses on those two roads. Whereas if you were focusing exclusively on a coverage goal, you'd put, you know, one or two buses down every road.
Right, but isn't rapid transit going to be taking care of some of that ridership goal?
So, um, it will, but what's happening with rapid transit is that the BRT is being added into the network, it's not adding, added on to. So there is only a little bit of additional resource being put into the network. Most of the service that is on BRT, that is going to be on rapid transit in future, is service that today is being spent on existing routes, right? So to the extent that BRT is coming in and BRT is being frequent, that will make a big difference on that BRT route. But it also means that we have to find other things to do in the other places with a little bit less money. I can't.
Sorry, the dog was trying to speak. Um, page, um, twenty-two specifically, I mean, and I know this is not, um, set in stone, but do you have an idea on what the difference in time will be on that change for Route E, which will be kind of a replacement of Route eighteen? Where it's just like, now you have more access, it's a longer route. How much longer is it going to take me to get from that side of town to downtown? When you, you're going almost into Fishburg and you just come back up the hill?
So, um, I'm sorry, can you get more specific? Are you specif- are you, are you asking specifically about what's happening in the Allied Drive area?
Right, I am specifically asking what's happening on I Drive.
Okay, great. So what's happening in the Allied Drive area is that, um, so let me, so right now, you have Route eighteen, right? And Route eighteen, it does this, um, thing where it goes from South Transfer Point to West Transfer Point, and it does a loop through the Allied Drive area. Um, and then kind of on the way to and from West Transfer Point, it might take one of two paths. That's the current service. And there's a former route, I understand, that used to operate called Route nineteen that was a kind of a more direct via Monroe into downtown. But that one isn't operating right now. Um, and I'll let Metro speak to the reasons why or why not it's running right now. What would happen in this alternative, which again, is not a proposal, it's just, this is how, yeah. Um, is if you were in the Allied Drive area, there would be two possible routes to use. One would be this E route. And the E, what the E route is intended to do is provide, um, a path from the Allied Drive area to all this commercial development, a little bit south along the Verona Road. Um, and as well, you know, down to the end where there are also some other low income neighborhoods over here. And it's connecting all these areas up to all the major central Madison destinations, including the hospital and including downtown. So it would be a slightly less direct path than Route nineteen was before into downtown. Um, on the other hand, it does go to a lot more places. Now, I don't know what frequency Route nineteen ran at, so I don't know how much or less people are waiting, but I assume it ran every thirty or every sixty.
Every thirty during the peak, every sixty during midday.
Okay.
There's no weekend service.
Okay, so it would be more frequent than Route nineteen was. So to some extent, you might be spending a little bit more time in the bus, uh, in exchange for less time at the bus stop. The other route that's still going through Allied Drive is this G, which is perhaps more similar to the existing eighteen, but it's a bit straighter. So the G is this route that would actually be a, an orbital route all around Madison, right? It goes from East Washington, passed through the, through the east, through Manona to around where the South Transfer Point is today, through the Allied Drive area, et cetera, and then up to the BRT on Mineral Point Road and even some job parks up here. And the point of this route is that it allows people to travel between various areas of Madison that a lot of people travel in between without having to go downtown. It would have, um, I believe, one stop in this area, kind of right up here. And so if you were trying to go basically to South Madison or to, uh, West Town Mall, instead of the eighteen, you would take the G. So that's what, that's how this alternative would serve that area.
But how long is that long route takes from, from beginning to end? I mean, it's enormous, it's so long. How, how many stops are going to be in between? Is that a two-hour route to get from beginning to?
I mean, if you were going to go from all, all, one end of the route to the other, sure, yeah, it would take quite a while. But the amount of time it would take you on the bus to get from, for example, the Allied Drive area to West Town Mall would, you know, be the same probably, or maybe even a little bit less than it is right now because you wouldn't have to change buses at West Transfer Point, right? Or the amount of time it would take you to get downtown might be a little bit longer on the bus compared to previous nineteen, but less time waiting. The amount of time it would take you to get to the hospital would probably be significantly less because there's nothing even, even remotely this direct in existing service. So this is not to say that this is perfect, but there, this, this is an area that we did actually spend a fair amount of time thinking about.
And how are you, are we accommodating the people that from the near Allied Drive, like in Don Smash neighborhood in the Midvale area, um, that are, that have jobs on, on campus?
Well, the E would take them right there, right? Because you, you have, you have this route here, goes up Midvale, goes to campus, has a stop on the university loop where the eighty and eighty-four can take you throughout the campus.
So we skip that call, yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Again, see that, right, right there. Yeah, I, um, I have to admit, I'm not a, I don't ride the bus. Today I just check and see how long it takes me to get to work and actually come bike. It takes me less time biking to get in, in the bus, using eighteen. And, and I hadn't realized that because I used to do the nineteen back in a few years ago. So, um, there is, I mean, I get it, Allied Drive is the biggest concentration in our, on our side that we need to find the equity. But I also want to, to acknowledge that there's a lot of people in this area and in other areas in Madison that really are trying to commit to not driving. Like they're really trying to be good to the environment and they're trying to just, um, leave their cars at home or not even have cars or whatever. So I, I, when, when we talk about equity, I am glad that we are talking about these neighborhoods that, that needed the most because that's totally goes with my tune. But at the same time, we also have people that are environmentally savvy and caring and whatever that, that we also need to be considering when we talk about equity. That's.
Thank you. Um, if, if, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so if I may, just one, one more thing about that. I think if we want to talk about, you know, environmental responsibility and getting the maximum possible environmental impact, what I can tell you is that this network, I think probably does the most that, you know, or gets close to. I don't want to say it's absolutely optimal, but it gets close to the most that could be done within an existing budget. And this probably gets you the highest, some, somewhere close to the highest possible ridership you, you might be able to get to, which would have the most environmental benefit. What this doesn't do though, because it's again, kind of the same amount of service you've had running all these years, is it doesn't provide a truly transformative change that would allow most people in Madison to mostly rely on the bus to kind of get wherever they need, right? And to like make those big life decisions. We would, this network would expand, this alternative would expand the number of places where that might be true. Uh, but it wouldn't like make that a reality for all of Madison and it truly can't without significantly more funding than the city has provided to date.
Thank you.
It appears, oh. Tom, I look like you were frozen, here for a second.
Yeah, I looked like all of you were frozen, it must have been on my end. But, uh, I believe Ken's up next, please go ahead, Ken.
All right, thanks for the presentation. Um, having been on the Transit Commission for the majority of the last eighteen years or so and thinking of the number of times that they've been redoing routes, I would, I would guess that the pre-pandemic route is about at, as far as the extreme edge of coverage as you probably have seen. Am I right?
Um, oh, it can get so much coverage here. Um, I've seen whole networks where everything is, you know, giant loops where the bus comes once.
What I'm getting at is that just from a, a political thing, once people have something, taking it away, that's how it's going to be perceived. Generally gets a whole lot more words than people who haven't had anything, who might get something new. And I could, and just again, thinking back that history of the last eighteen years, the number of alders that would come and say, you know, you, your route is taking away from service in my district. Strategically, how do you approach that? I mean, this isn't your first rodeo and so you, you probably. I mean, this isn't your first rodeo, and so you you probably have gone to reducing coverage and move to ridership in with your former other clients that you've had. What are, where are some of the key strategies you use?
Okay, so uh, thank you for clarifying that. Um, and apologies if my first reply seemed um a little off. But what I, what I would say about that um is a few things. Um, for one thing, um, I want to make it very clear that as a consultant, we're not advocating that you should go more towards a ridership alternative. We're saying, these are the, if those are the goals, then your network should look more like that.
Yeah.
Um, and you're right. Uh, when you go from a system that is coverageier to a system that is um ridershipier, for lack of a better word, um, you do get a whole lot of people, as the numbers clearly show, who end up um farther from service than they are right now and who may feel that their service is being taken away and who uh will no doubt contact their alders or their representatives in whatever form that they know how to and let them know that they are not happy about that. And everyone on these boards should be ready to be receiving these emails and these phone calls in response to something like this map or even this map, which is just different, right? Um, you're going to get reactions to that. And those reactions are to be expected and they are totally legitimate. People are used to things and change is not always pleasant and often is not particularly to communities that often lose out from change. Um, with that said, that's why we place a lot of emphasis on the outcomes and on what will actually, uh, what, how how much more or less useful does the service become as a result of doing this thing? And so what we, the reason we show these two particular metrics, proximity and access, is that we can say, yes, this gray bar on the right here, it gets bigger, right? In this proposal or in this alternative. That's a real impact and it's worth acknowledging and deciding whether you're willing to take that impact. But also, that impact isn't coming for no payoff. The reason why that impact might be acceptable, again, not my decision to make, it's the policymaking body's decision to make, is that as a result of this, you're able to get service that's faster and more frequent and more direct, which provides a whole lot more usefulness, right? And that's, that's really the, that's really the message. If you want things to get more useful, these are the things that need to happen. And it's not to say that these are easy or that they necessarily um are going to be acceptable or should be accepted by your community, but that's the reason to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Alder Hinkton McKinney, you're up next, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And I'm I'm glad that um you made that comparison because um um yes, the expectation will be strong reactions, both positive and negative. Um, in when when I hear the statement of um environmentally conscious benefits, and I hear those, but in the reality, also in my ear, I will be hearing um those who are just trying to make it um day, day by day. And sometimes all of those don't line up. Um, and um, and so um showing the trade-offs is very important and the benefits are very important too because you didn't come in and say, uh, you started automatically saying that you're not making recommendations at all. You're just looking and showing the trade-offs. And as you move into um your community engagement, that is very, very strong because you're not saying one over the other, but people need to know that these are the benefits, these are the trade-offs, and these are the expectations. And I'm hoping that that will be strongly represented when you go into the communities presenting of these possibilities and changes.
Um, yeah, that's definitely going to be the case. I also wanted to quickly make one other point, which is that you mentioned strong positive and strong negative reactions. I think it's important, and you probably all already know this just for sitting on these commissions, but um it's also important to know that you're always going to hear a lot more negative reaction than positive reaction in your inbox, which doesn't necessarily mean that that's where the public as a whole stands. That is, the people who had the time and the energy and, you know, and but but also the the, you know, who felt strongly about it, but also had the time and the energy and resources to to um get in touch with you. And so that's also why in the public outreach process, we're going to be focusing on, you know, allowing these direct channels of input. But we're also going to be, as we did in the first phase of the outreach, um, doing a broader public survey. I'm trying to get as many responses to that as possible and categorizing those responses also by demographics so that we can see where these things are sitting from a slightly broader perspective than um, you know, whoever ends up uh, you know, leaving you voicemails and writing you emails.
All right, um, Harold, you're up next, go ahead.
Thank you. I have one question. You mentioned the peak hour or weekend or nighttime only service, and you made the point that, yeah, it's intentionally hard to see on the map. I found it like I can't actually see it at all, so maybe pumping that a little bit over. But what's the assumption about peak hour service specifically that you've made when coming up with these maps? Because it sounds like there is still going to be some peak hour service. I mean, I know peak hour service is usually the most expensive to provide. So yeah, what what's the assumption with going in there? Because it does not feature into a lot of these metrics because you know, calculated noon, which is not peak hour. So can you say a little bit about that?
I can, and thank you, that's a very excellent question. Um, uh, from a technical point of view, which I'm a technician, and so, you know, it's uh, it scratches me in the right places. Um, so uh, the assumption for the peak, actually, let me just start out by saying, nobody can really tell you what the peak should look like in the future and how much the peak is coming back, right? We know that the peak in transit terms kind of went away during the pandemic. Um, we know that it's coming back, and nobody really knows quite to what degree it will come back. Some amount of remote learning and work from home is going to continue after, you know, we're through whatever this phase of the pandemic is, right? Um, so we had to come up with something. And the assumption that we made was that about, um, if you think about the service over the course of a day, right? There's like this level of service in the middle of the day, and then actually there's like a little bit more in the peak hours. That amount that is above the baseline was about um sixteen or seventeen percent of twenty nineteen service, of the total service. So we assumed you'll need about half of that to meet the peak needs in future. And they were allocated differently in the two alternatives, actually. And so let me just show you the maps. So in the ridership alternative, we assumed that most of the peak resources would go to the peak-only routes because um most of the other routes are at frequencies where they could handle most of the peak demand, there's enough capacity. There's a little bit left over after those peak-only routes, so we're not just relying on that. But that's the major part of it. In the coverage, we obviously have significantly lower frequencies in a lot of places. And so the assumption in the coverage is that, to the extent we have left resources for the peak, they would be going into higher frequencies on the on the routes you see here. A lot of blue, maybe blues turning red, basically, on a few of the routes.
And then just to clarify, and so for the metric of like percentage of people who do not have access to service, that includes not having access to a bus that only runs during peak?
Well, we've measured both. So you see here, when we measure this, up to the end of the blue is all-day service. And then in this kind of gold brown thing is mostly peak-only service. And so in ridership, we're relying on a fair amount of people only being near service in the peak, which is why most of the resources would go, the peak-only resources would go there. Whereas in coverage, we're not really relying on the peak at all to provide extra coverage. So here we'd just be adding frequency on some of these um light blue and on every sixty and every thirty-minute routes.
I think that makes sense.
Right, um, Alder, your all call, please, go ahead, you're up next.
Um, so just, I just want to make one more, one more comment. I mean, I do want to um ad acknowledge what you were saying, Daniel, about the people that had the time to to email and to contact, contact us um on a daily basis. Um, I I have to say, I do have a crowd on on that regard of people that have been contacting me since April about this post-Route nineteen. And I find it extremely hard for me to disagree with their sentiment, but mostly on the in, on the sense of the lack of communication, the lack of of um awareness that was made before the the routes were discontinued. Like, I mean, I walk in the door one day and I notice the bus, you know, the the signs about it. So, I mean, if you can find my record of me calling back in last year asking about this and as a constituent. And then now I have, the rest of the constituents coming at me. They have been extremely patient through a pandemic. We all know it has been a hard time for everybody, right? We are all ready to get back to work. These people are getting back to work, they are looking for some normalcy. And I honestly, um, I understand all the the budgetary needs that we are having in order to satisfy that specific route, but I don't, I don't think it it would be fair to just totally disregard their input since we as a city haven't been able to clearly communicate these changes. So I'm only hoping that whatever um outreach you're going to be doing will be something that that is clear and really gets people involved on on these discussions. Because again, they they put up with not with not having the bus because of the pandemic and the short um staff, but that expectation was, they didn't know that it wasn't going to come back, right? So there was an expectation that it was going to be back there. So that's, that's really where where this is coming from. And Post nineteen, again, it has been, from my perspective, the number three item in my list of the constants of of, of, you know, outreach.
Yeah, that's totally fair. Um, I do want to say, I'm not saying that like you shouldn't listen to people. I mean, obviously, if you hear people.
I want to say, but I want to clarify that it's a responsibility to communicate is better and and we fail at that, so let's not repeat that.
I I also want to say, you know, honestly, if this is like the key issue for your constituents and we hear about it a lot, right? If people are telling us, you know, we lean more this way, but what's really missing is Line nineteen and you get, you know, and we get a lot more comments about that than other stuff, we'll know it's more important and it'll be a good reason for that route to be in the draft plan. Um, so that's again why these are, you know, why I'm being clear that these are alternatives and not proposals. We're not saying this is done. We're saying this is, this is kind of our first shot at seeing what it might look like. And i- if we prioritize this or that, tell us what's missing, tell us what's wrong, and we'll see what can be made to fit in like a more concrete plan. Um, and in terms, well, yeah, that's that's all.
Thank you.
All right, Margaret, you're up next, please go ahead.
Yeah, a question that I I actually don't expect uh to have answered tonight, but I just want to bookmark it for Metro staff to know that it's going to come up. Um, as you've been doing this study, Daniel, you've been looking at twenty nineteen and working within the parameters of twenty nineteen funding. Um, but as we know, the uh, the state just made significant, the state legislature just enacted significant cuts to our operating funding, specifically for Madison and for and for Milwaukee. And so um, I'm going to want to know how those cuts impact this future-looking plan. Um, and also just a comment that I want to make that um, you know, obviously, one of the difficulties of doing these kinds of plans is you're almost intrinsic, that, you know, you're looking at what is now, which is, you know, where jobs are now, where people are now, which in a growing and spreading community is is backwards looking. I mean, and so when I look at these maps, I feel a bit of frustration that we're not doing projections of where we think population is going to be growing. What does the master plan say about where we're putting, you know, how we've zoned this farm field or that, you know, redeveloping subdivision? What kind of densities are we looking at? What kind of um service needs are we looking at having in those regions so that we actually are building a transit system to serve the needs that exist by the time we actually start running that system? Um, and feel free to comment and correct me on that if you like, but it's just a general comment. And then the question for staff to answer about operating costs.
Yeah, I feel like staff should answer that question because I really don't, don't know about that one. I will say on the future development, um, we did put in some effort to think about where development was going. We had city staff on hand who are planning staff and who could answer those questions while we drew these. Um, but also, we did do this big public survey where we asked people what their priorities for transit was. And I will say that service to new development at the edges of the region of the seven or eight choices we had definitely fell to the bottom of the priorities that people had. People were really interested in um providing, most interested, people were interested in a lot of things, but people are most interested in um expanded mobility for people with low incomes, basic access, you know, to as to as many people as possible, um, uh, reducing pollution and GHG, um maximizing access to jobs. But we did specifically ask about that one, and it was significantly less taken up than a lot of the other ones. So so we did also have that piece of input in in mind. So we're, yeah, that's what I can say about that. On the operating funds, I'll defer to staff.
Yeah, I I can take that one. The um, so, you know, fortunately, we do have the federal revenues um from the Rescue Act, and that's, you know, that's why the state cut our funding. Um, but so what this means is that that cut won't hit us immediately. You know, we will just, we'll be drawing down our federal funds more quickly. Um, whether or not it hits us in the long run, you know, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe will really depend on how much ridership does come back and how much those fair revenues do come back. Um, but, you know, unfortunately, none of us are in a position to really know for sure what's going to happen. But um, again, we we don't expect to have an issue unless the ridership recovery takes significantly longer than any of us expect.
Right, uh, Oliver Foster, you're up next, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, uh, on this last point that Margaret made, um, I think one, one thing that might be an option is perhaps even in the report, is to just include an overlay of the growth priority areas that is in the comp plan um on the on the different proposals. And I think that would at least highlight where proposed service and the different alternatives would would align with those. And I think, um, you know, to your point, yeah, there was not a lot of interest necessarily in in looking to serve new growth at the periphery especially, but a number of those growth priority areas are redevelopment, um, kind of central city opportunities. So I think it would be good to just see where those align. Um, on the, some of the conversations around sort of impact of BRT and percent of resources that are going there, um, I've, I've heard a number of questions that's similar to that. Um, and I think it's a really important thing that we do answer when when folks come back with some new numbers. Um, I think it'd be really important to clarify that, I mean, both of these alternatives are are working off the assumption that that BRT is the sort of, is the backbone of of the entire analysis. And I, I think being really explicit about that and that this is not, there is no such thing in either alternative as BRT being kind of an add-on service. So I just, I think there's been this, this idea kind of floated out, oh, well, so many reasons we're going to BRT, well, what, maybe we shouldn't do BRT? And then we have a bunch of extra resources to to, you know, to to provide better service. So I think just kind of providing some clarity around how BRT is integrated into these models would probably be really, really helpful for folks. Um, one thing that um, I I'm guessing there's not a real great way um to do this as you're going and getting input from members of the community, but I think these questions, like we heard from, you know, Alder Figaro Cole, and and I saw it in some of the comments that we received of like, okay, well, I live here, here's how I use transit or want to use transit. How do I, I don't know how to evaluate these things against that, right? Like, I can, I can look at the map, and I know how far away I might be from a proposed route. And I could even tell maybe by the color of the frequency of those routes, but translating that into what will my experience be? Like, how long will it take me to get downtown? I know what it was in the past. How do I, how do I understand that? I mean, in an ideal world, people could run origins and destinations through these, you know, through these models, and it would spit out some numbers for them. Perhaps short of that, at least trying to come up with some sort of typical travel trips and doing that kind of analysis, here's current state, here's ridership model, here's coverage model. For, you know, even up to 10 different kind of example trips might, I think, really be helpful for folks to get an understanding of how these different alternatives would work in reality. And related to that, I think that specifically this question of transfers, again, I saw that come up in a few of the comments we received. If people are trying to evaluate and seeing, oh, looks like I could get to these different destinations, but it might require, you know, two transfers. I think they're also probably working off the assumption of what their current experience is with transfers. So perhaps some information or highlighting how transfers are different in a high-frequency network versus in something like we have today, right? That a transfer where you're sitting around for 30 to 40 minutes is different than one where you're there for five minutes and then you're moving on. So maybe calling that out would be helpful. The last two points I had, or excuse me. Sorry about that. I guess one, well, one last point is when we did this RFP and the Transportation Policy and Planning Board was talking through what our policy priorities were related to this network redesign. The number one, there are a number of things in there, and it probably worth us reviewing that when we come back to the Policy and Planning Board. But one of really the key measure that we ended up moving to the top was around EMT reduction. So vehicle miles traveled reduction. And an overarching goal that we stated before we embarked on this was we need to, this should help us reduce the amount of driving that's happening in Madison. And I think you touched real briefly, Daniel, on that in one of your responses about, you know, I think in the concept of sustainability, for example. But maybe if there's a way to also highlight that and be clear, okay, answering this question of what's the expected impact on EMT? And, you know, clearly, modeling actually numbers would be, you know, very challenging. But I think at least in broad terms, what would we expect out of a ridership-like concept versus a coverage concept on overall car use? Since that was one of the key priorities that we called out before we did this. So those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like me to respond to them or?
Yes, if you have anything, that'd be good.
Yeah, I got several things. So on that last one, this is actually a good thing to talk about, what causes VMT reduction? So we're not going to model how much VMT reduction you could get, right? That's a hazardous exercise, even in the best of times, even when doing things in the long run. In the short run, so many things can happen that it's difficult to know those kinds of things. But what is true is that, you know, reductions in VMT come from mode shift. They come from people making decisions to either not use their car today or to not buy a car because they don't need one, right? And those decisions are enabled by frequent service. And so if you, if that is the number one interest that someone has, is if it is VMT reduction, then the thing you want is frequent and direct service to as many places as possible. And that drives you quite strongly towards a more ridership-oriented model. And, you know, and that's of course correlated then with reductions in emissions, perhaps even reductions in congestion, although there's other things that play into that. But just to make clear what's related to what there. Now, in terms of, I thank you for the suggestion of the overlay map with the growth priority areas. And thank you for pointing out that a number of those aren't at the edges of the region. And I'm sorry that I didn't think about that in my response to the prior board member. So apologies to you about that. And I think that that's probably a fairly simple thing to do. I think we can take on board the request, for example, trips. I don't know yet whether or not we are able to respond to that. But thank you for providing it, and we will discuss it with the team tomorrow.
All right, Mike, go ahead.
Thanks. I just, sorry, I wanted to go at the end if there's any more from the Board or Committee. Go ahead.
It looks like Denise. Go ahead, Denise.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. So this may be kind of a next step question. It's just something that I want to bring to awareness. So I appreciate that walk times and wait times are part of the equation. When you're looking at the equation, how is walkability factored in? So, you know, for folks with mobility impairments, you know, thinking about where, you know, the walk might only be two minutes, but it may be that it needs to cross six lanes of road that doesn't have good signalization on it. So is that part of the equation when you're looking at the quality of these two different ends of the continuum? Or is that a question for later when you're actually looking at exactly where the route goes?
Thank you for this question. Pretty important thing to make sure is clear when people are, you know, hearing these measures. So a couple of things to know about the way that we calculated these measures. When we say that people are within a quarter mile of service, we mean that there are actual streets that they can walk on. And it's a quarter-mile walk along those streets from the bus stop, you know, or less, from the bus stop to wherever their residence may be. So we are, when we talk about distances, walk distances and walk times, we're basing ourselves on the actual street network, not on, you know, as the crow flies from A to B. And that's, so in that sense, I think we're taking some of that into account. In terms of when we are figuring out walk times, though, our general assumption is a walking speed that is the walking speed of an able-bodied adult. And so what that means is that it's faster than some people may be able to do. And to the extent that people might need to cross six lanes of traffic, our measure will capture that in the distance that people need to walk, but it won't necessarily capture the full hazard that people need to walk. And that's also one of the reasons why it's really important for us not to focus only on that measure, on that access measure, because we can't calculate it in a way that is true for everyone. We're calculating it in a way that is as true as we can make it to perhaps a median person. So that's why those impacts to proximity, where, for example, you see between on the coverage alternative, a lot more people within closer walks than on the ridership alternative. Those are real impacts, and they will impact people with limited mobility more than they might impact other people. And I think that's fair to emphasize and fair to point out. So I think that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you. Bill, you're up next. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. I did not hear in the conversation about anything about the existing transfer points, like the West Transfer Point. Will that go away?
Let me clarify that for you. It depends which alternative we're looking at. So basically, so here's the existing network. The map of the existing network is what I'm displaying right now. And the four transfer points plus East Town Mall and the Capitol are noted on this map. And essentially, when we designed the ridership alternative, we found that we didn't really need these transfer points anymore. And in fact, the point of the transfer points is that it allows a whole bunch of very infrequent service on the edges of Madison to all come together at about the same time, you know, ideally three to five minutes before the hour. And then all the buses leave again on the hour, right? And that's useful in a very low-frequency network to try to get people to connect to as many places as possible. But it also means that even if the waits aren't very long or, you know, they're never longer than maybe eight or 10 minutes, it also means that you are forcing a lot of people to wait along paths that may seem like they should be relatively direct. So in this ridership alternative, instead of transfer points, we essentially have drawn routes that try to go all the way from one edge of Madison as much as possible, like say this D route, which has two branches here deep in southwest Madison, and then goes all the way into downtown, and then comes back out on the other side and also serves other places. So we're trying to minimize the number of kind of forced transfers. At the same time, there would be transfers in this network if you were, you know, going in directions probably mostly other than downtown. But those wouldn't be at transfer points. They'd be maybe at BRT stations. Or, I mean, they could be at transfer points, but they wouldn't have to be. They could be on street as well. So that's in ridership. In the coverage network, because we're maintaining this idea of trying to get close to as many people as possible with relatively infrequent service, the transfer points remain essential and would stay there in the same places that they are now. At least that's our assumption so far.
Okay. I found it interesting, and I like the way that you're presenting it as far as usefulness. I think that makes a lot of sense that how the new coverage or how the different systems could be useful to people. And I think maybe, you know, we spent quite a bit of discussion this evening talking about walking and riding the bus. But there could be, for many citizens of, and I understand that that limits to some people. That's all their choices are. But for other people, citizens, there's choices about whether they ride a bicycle from their home, let's say, and to a bus that's a quarter mile away, and then put their bike on the bus with them or park it at the bus someplace and take the bus. And also with autos, people would, because they could, no, it doesn't really matter exactly how fast they get over to the BRT, but they park their car near the BRT route, and then they're guaranteed ease of getting downtown with having to worry about parking and so forth. So I think, you know, that, under the ridership model, makes sense for more citizens, I guess, besides just the walking and bus ridership, I guess. I don't know. That's my observation. I'm missing something, but rather over the coverage.
Yeah, so there's a couple of points I'd like to emphasize in response to that. One is that there is a tendency in on service or having choices. And the truth is that everyone has choices. People have fewer and more choices, but even people in situations that may appear relatively desperate, you know, will have some measure of choice and agency in what they do. And so we can't assume that anyone is a captive rider, which is also a terrible phrase that people use in transit planning sometimes. So that's one thing. But then the other point you were making was about how people might access transit. And you're right, some people are going to bike to transit rather than walk. Some people might drive to a park-and-ride lot. The reason we focus mostly on walking and walk distance is that that is how the vast majority of people access transit. It's also how the vast majority of people have always and probably will always access transit. And I say that for a couple of important reasons. The first one is that you can certainly enhance the range of transit access with major investments in biking. Certainly, the whole country of the Netherlands can provide all of us with great lessons on that. I don't want to minimize that. But in terms of, you know, how many bikes you can, how much people can bike is really limited by how good that infrastructure is at the places where people get off their bike. And there's really only so many bikes that people are ever going to be able to take with them on the bus. So there's some physical limits to that in today's built environment in Madison. In terms of park-and-ride, you can also, yeah, develop a whole bunch of park-and-ride at the edges of the BRT or any other frequent route and get something convenient for people who are willing to drive there. On the other hand, the bigger your park-and-ride is, the more land and construction costs you've associated with it, and the less you've used that land and that construction cost to build transit-oriented development in that location that might get ridden, that might generate significantly higher ridership than that park-and-ride situation might.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions for Daniel? Additional feedback? All right, seeing none. Thank you. Mike, you want to just speak?
Oh, yeah, everybody, and say thank you for, thank you for all the discussion. Sorry about the last battery dying, but I just wanted to run through a couple of things. So we're doing this like we did the Choices Report where there will be an alternatives report posted on our website after this meeting. They're finishing it now, and we'll send you a notice if that's available. And then, Daniel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we kept, I've been looking at some of the numbers here. I think we can go ahead and say that roughly, I'm just going to summarize this. Let me know if I've. So roughly 30% of the service is on the A and B lines. The numbers we came up was in the 27% to 30% range, but that's really 2%. I think we can just say roughly 30% of the service hours are on the A and B BRT lines. That also needs to be taken with the fact that there was existing service in those corridors that it's replacing anyways. So that's not an additional 30%. But that's, you know, roughly a doubling of service that would have normally been in those corridors today. So I think if we can tie up that loose end, that'll, 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 that would, that would be, I think we can go ahead and do that. So, yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, that's kind of our estimate, too. It's kind of around 25 to 30, depending on what detailed assumptions you make, versus maybe 15 today that you're spending in those corridors.
All right. So thank you again for the presentation and for answering all of our questions. Last call for additional questions or feedback on this item before we move on. All right, seeing none, we will then move on to Legistar 6632, I'm sorry, 66382, update on action items from prior joint meetings, which will be handled by TC Chair.
Thanks, Tom. Let me know if you can't hear me. I had internet instability earlier, and I can always turn my video off if that happens. I'll just give you a couple of brief updates. Follow-up on the equity, diversity, and inclusion. The RFP for our training proposal, those came back mid-July, but I understand we received quite a number of them. So we're going to be delayed and won't see that recommendation back to mid-August, the August 11th TC meeting. And certainly will invite the TPPB members to attend as well. With regard to the proposed amendments to the Transportation Commission ordinance, that sort of evolved a little bit. The TC and TPPB leadership had been needing to discuss how to better clarify which goes, which items go where. TPPB leadership brought forward a suggestion that, you know, merger of the two bodies be considered, which is on the agenda to discuss this evening. And as noted during our leadership meetings, the most challenging consideration is addressing how would we get all the work done in that particular scenario? So certainly something we'll address later on. With regard to Metro Transit Network Redesign and Traffic Calming Subcommittee, those are on the agenda tonight, and Complete Green Streets and And complete green streets and prioritization of capital streets. Those um have been, those conversations have been occurring at the Transportation Policy and Planning Board meetings. And TC members have been invited to attend and and certainly uh watch and and listen to what's happening there. So um that's that's where we are. Does anybody have any questions? Trying to keep it real brief because a lot of what we're going to talk about is on our agenda this evening.
Questions for Chair Kovac? All right, seeing none. Uh, thank you for that update. Our next item then is Legisdar six, six, eight, three, review and discuss the traffic calming subcommittee final report, uh which will also be handled by Chair Kovac, TC Chair Kovac. So and which um which page would you like to start with first? I have them all.
Uh, let's, let's go to the cover page of the final report, please.
Okay.
And thanks for doing the screen sharing, Tom. I appreciate it. So you've seen pieces of the final report before, but uh after a year of our lives invested in this, we do have a a completed final report that we're presenting this evening. And if you could just scroll down, you can see that um I I just want to acknowledge the team members that are shown on the cover page of the report. This was just an excellent collaborative effort. Uh, people spent a ton of time at the meetings, outside of the meetings and um worked really well together, both the membership as well as the a city staff that participated. So, you know, huge thanks to everybody who was involved in the process. You could just uh scroll to the table of contents for me. We're interested in your uh feedback and your support this evening. Um, and we're hoping to see the city move forward with the new Safe Streets Madison program. In the report, we have the executive summary, which I will uh spend the most time on this evening. We also have um two sections, section two and three, which provide background on the uh subcommittee itself. All the details you'd ever want to know, as well as background about um Imagine Madison, Madison in Motion, Vision Zero, High Injury Network, et cetera, et cetera. So anybody who's reading about our priority recommendations is going to have the background to understand uh where we uh how we arrived at those um recommendations. The largest, um, well, the the work plan shows you how our work evolved over time. But the the biggest and most important part of the report is the Traffic Calming Subcommittee Priority Recommendations. We have a number of them in in seven different sections. Um, I'll highlight some of those in the in the executive summary, but hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review them because it really walks you through the entire uh program that's recommended. And then we also have Exhibit A, which is the Safe Streets Madison prioritization tool. Um, and the resources for solutions and interventions in Exhibit B. So if you could flip to the executive summary. You know, we as as, and you know, one of the things that's really excellent is we've worked very well together between the Transportation Commission and the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. And because we both identified issues related to traffic calming and traffic safety, uh, we decided to form a joint subcommittee to address this issue. Uh, while it was formed in February of twenty twenty, um, you know, and and certainly right there in the first paragraph, and you're all familiar with what was the goal uh and the purpose of the subcommittee. Uh, we were delayed because of the pandemic, so we didn't start meeting until July. And so we've spent the past year working on finishing up the report. And and we really wanted to try and and improve traffic safety by taking a number of programs and and making it more efficient and more effective. So the the recommendation to the Transportation Commission and Transportation Policy and Planning Board is to accept the final report and recommend adoption of the final report and adoption of all of priority recommendations in that section five by the common council. However, we would like you, uh, we'd like to discuss the timing of when the two bodies would accept the final report because as our um initial resolution outlined, once you accept those reports, the Traffic Calming Subcommittee automatically dissolves. And since we have some process yet to go um in order to get it through the common council, it might be best to wait for you to accept the final reports until um they are referred to you by the common council. So certainly something that that we could discuss this evening. So I just I'd like to highlight the priority recommendations. And if you could focus in on our two uh key priorities, that would that would be great. Um, so we've got the, if you could scroll, well, I think I sent you down a little bit too far. Uh, thank you. So we're recommending a new program called Safe Streets Madison. And we would wrap the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, pedestrian bicycle enhancements programs, Safe Roads to School Program, and the Vision Zero projects into this new Safe Streets Madison program. Uh, there might be some additional projects as shown that might uh be decisioned through SSM or Safe Streets Madison as well. But those four programs would be part of Safe Streets Madison. And then, Tom, if you wouldn't mind focusing in just a little bit lower on those two key priorities. We spend a lot of time focusing on what we really want to accomplish, looking at Vision Zero in particular, and certainly considering Complete Green Streets, but mainly Vision Zero. We want to make sure that the resources that we have go to the most impactful places in Madison. So you can see here, um, and I hate when people read things to to you as we're making presentations. But it is very important that we're fair and equitable in how we do things, and equity was a huge part of this. But we're really looking to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries on our city streets. And we're going to use the High Injury Network in order to do this. So just like Vision Zero, we're going to um allocate resources in the areas where we can do the most improvement in terms of reducing um serious injuries and potential fatalities. But along with that, another important thing that we need to do is close the gaps in our pedestrian network and in our bicycle network. And this has a safety improvement um factor as well. Because by improving this connectivity, we're enhancing safety and we're facilitating, excuse me, facilitating walking, biking and transit. And by doing so, we will be improving safety for those vulnerable users. So everything that we're doing in our priority recommendations really revolves around these two key priorities. And as noted at the bottom of the page, uh, we're going to work very closely and leverage Vision Zero um mainly Complete Green Streets, Metro Net uh Network uh redesign, et cetera. So we're working very closely with all of the other initiatives that are going on right now. Equity is a top priority for the city of Madison. Everybody knows that. Uh, we met with Tarek Sakoff from uh Racial Equity Social and and Justice Initiative. Uh, so it's a whole meeting talking about how how we can best uh think about equity as we worked on our priority recommendations. Uh, he was very helpful in in talking us through the process. And every time we worked on a priority recommendation, equity came into the conversation. And we reviewed the tools, we used the tools individually as we worked on our sections of the report. And um I wrapped everything together and and was the main drafter of the final report. But everybody had a role in in contributing to it um as we worked through the process. And then, once we had our final draft, we went back again with an equity lens and spent another meeting talking about it to make sure. And we had uh additional, a couple of additional recommendations as a result of that. So very, very important uh part of the process. Another important part is is to look at requests proactively. Um, is our opinion and and I think a fact that when you have a a system that is uh complaint based more so than being proactive in how you identify issues, it's it's really inherently not equitable. So we wanted to move the um, the main way that staff would generate um projects to come before the Transportation Commission to this proactive approach. The Transportation Commission would review the projects um as it does for most of these um programs now. Um, and this will make it more efficient. Uh, the TC will have, will have the same priorities for for all of these projects, the same evaluation tools, this the same method of reaching decisions. And doing it this way will make a um a single more effective public engagement process as well. So we're going to have the prioritization tool, the Excel spreadsheet uh that you've seen that saved in Legisdar. It was developed to make sure that uh decisions are made based on all the key priorities of the program. The toolbox of best practices is in Exhibit B. Uh, but the main thing that we discussed that we want to consider every type of potential solution. And that we should be looking at solutions that can really address the problem and can address it the best that it can, the closer you can get to a hundred percent, the better, as well as how cost effective the solutions are. So you can bring forward an issue and have more than one potential solution, uh which one may be more cost effective than the other. And then we spent an interesting amount of time talking about balancing priorities because that's going to be, you know, it's always an issue when when Neighborhood Traffic Management Program comes to the Transportation Commission. How do we balance priorities? We spent a lot of time talking about that. And we did our best to make sure that we're um aligning with what Madison's goals are, which is why the background in the report is important to have before you can get to the priority recommendations. And along the way, we identified several potential barriers to Safe Streets Madison. And that means that Madison itself is going to have to balance priorities. And there's a lot of discussion about that in Vision Zero. And that's still a Complete Green Streets. That spills over into the Safe Streets Madison program. So an important thing to highlight. So in summary, uh, transportation, uh, or excuse me, the Traffic Calming Subcommittee recommends that the new Safe Streets Madison program be adopted and implemented. That Yang Tao, as the city traffic engineer, would be responsible for that. Uh, the Traffic Calming Subcommittee would also suggest and recommend that the Transportation Commission perform an oversight role throughout the implementation process and that we look to have this implemented um hopefully yet in calendar year twenty twenty one. Um, we'd also like to suggest that TC would be responsible for approving any future changes to the to the program. Um, so that's what's in the report and and we have a a common council resolution that goes along with it that really just walks you through everything that we've discussed. Um, and uh recommends the same thing, an adoption of the report and the priority recommendations. And that we implement the Safe Streets Madison program and and terminate the uh Neighborhood Traffic Management Program um in order to wrap it into Safe Streets Madison. So that's a a really quick summary of a lot of work and a lot of um paper that was presented to you. Um, and we're happy to walk more uh closely through the priority, the prioritization tool, if that's helpful, or the common council resolution. And um again, we're looking for your support and we're very hopeful that all of the Alders who are on the Transportation Commission and the uh Transportation Policy and Planning Board and any other Alders in the city who are supportive of this would would join Alder Foster as as a sponsor.
All right, thank you, Anne. All right, um, Alder Figurale Cole, please go ahead.
Thank you, Anne, for the report. We appreciate it. I am a um, I'm in support of anything to do with solutions for for um the whole case for solutions on on traffic. And this is, you know, Vision Zero, Twenty is Plenty, Safe Streets are things that I've been following um up on. So my question to the board and you or whoever wants to answer, what um, what kind of communication plan are you guys going to roll out to the Alders and to the rest of the community? Bring them um up to speed in all the efforts that you just share with us?
Um, could you scroll to uh page uh nineteen in the report for me, please? Um, we have a very robust uh public education and outreach process to help facilitate communication about the transition. Uh, staff has been talking to people about this transition already this year, saying we're in the process of looking at some new programs. And uh Alders would be a very important part of this process because we need to reach out to everybody. Um, so we're looking at working through certainly press releases, city Alders, um, city staff, boards, committees and commissions that are, you know, that work with us on this, neighborhood meetings, neighborhood resource teams. We talked with Tarek about this. Uh, community organizations, various events, certainly use social media and other online communications. Um, and then we're looking to develop a new Safe Streets Madison website uh to have that be a great connection point as well. So and any suggestions that people have, this is just, you know, the beginnings of of the plan, but we wanted to be very robust because we agree with you. We 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 really need people to know that there is going to be one program and so that everything can be funneled through that one source.
Thank you. I mean, one of the issues that I encounter with um with uh the people that I'm here to serve is that the notion that the only um effective method for solving this issue is enforcement, which means we need more policing, which needs means we need more money to get those police officers to see um and manage the situation. And any police officer in the city is is going to disagree with that. We know that that is not the the only solution for this. It's just part of the solution. We need a comprehensive way to to manage this problem. So um enforcement is just a a portion of that solution. Yet we we need to, I I really feel, I mean, I I talked to the mayor about this, I talked to whoever wants to listen. We really, really, really need to get a hold of the narrative and get a hold of the communication, to use the media, whatever is our disposal to get this information out there. And also show the statistics, show people how um, how the impact of um of bullets flying around is the same as a as a person losing their life, but life on a car accident or on the streets. It's like the same, people get impacted, someone dies, someone, family members are are left hanging there. There's in fact so many people, it's the same result. But yet, when we're talking about about traffic um tragedies, um, it doesn't really get the same level of attention as as all the type of violence. So I think it is, you know, again, anything that I can do to promote that message, I mean, it's what I'm been trying to do thus far. Um, but any help that I can get from this community will be greatly appreciated to reinforce, to reinforce those messages. Um, I mean, I I would love to see more cohesive um um presentation from from these, you know, from city staff and the police department coming together to to neighborhood associations and presenting those topics as one and see how um how easily the the efforts complement each other. And with that, uh, well, thank you. Thank you so very much for for all these efforts. I really appreciate it.
Sure. And we're talking about developing uh talking points, consistent talking points that the Alders can have, one-page summary of uh Safe Streets Madison, so the Alders can have that. Um, and everybody in the city can have that. Um, and also one thing that I would say is that um there's a range of solutions and potential interventions that were discussed and will be considered. Everything from low-cost alternatives that can be temporary until something can be done later on. So it's a very wide range of interventions that we will be considering, so.
Just a a couple of weeks ago, I was at a station, fire station number six. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was at a station, fire station number six over there by Park Street. And I was just talking there with the with the people in charge. And one of the things that the most dangerous place they had to go to help somebody is on the Belt Line. And again, traffic related, how do we make people see that? How 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 we create that, you know, consciousness on how we as individuals are really the biggest? We have control over this. But again, we just need to figure out a way to create that consciousness and really nail these down on people's minds. But this is something that impacts everybody and it has, it requires all of us, not just enforcement.
So great. And I think part of that will happen through Vision Zero as well with some of the education that is being considered and conducted through the Vision Zero Initiative as well. And, you know, Vision Zero and Safe Streets Madison works in lockstep together. And so Safe Streets Madison is really going to leverage what's being done in Vision Zero and take advantage of a lot of that as well.
Thank you.
So I guess we basically want to hear from folks. You know, this is, we've heard from you along the way that we were on track with the priority recommendations and hopefully with the final product and that we have your support to move forward and bring it to the city council and then back to you with with a referral and hopefully move on with a brand new program to move forward with some of the initiatives we discussed tonight.
Thanks, Anne, for for sharing that and sharing our efforts with everyone. Are there any further questions or comments or recommendations? I'm not seeing any hands up, so I'll just go on here myself for a moment. So this report and the documents represent a significant effort by all the members of the Subcommittee. All of us worked on it in one form or another outside of meetings, but it really is Anne Kovac who put what you see before you together. The last several weeks or perhaps several months, she's really been the one who's taken all of our notes and taken all of our comments and the things we've discussed and consolidated them into the into the final report that you see there. So this this would not exist without her efforts, and I just want to take an extra moment to acknowledge that.
Thanks.
So thank you so much, Anne, for doing all of this. So yes, we will, you know, we're looking for Alders to sponsor this at Common Council. And of course, we'll all be seeing it again, assuming it gets referred to us. And we'll have a chance to vote on it at that time. So if there are no other, if there are any further comments, now is the time. Yang, go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Subcommittee again for all the great work, also for the collaboration with staff team. And, you know, really listen to to us and, you know, come up with, I think, some, you know, really solid recommendations and a report so that we come moving forward and improve our service for the public. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Yang. So thanks again to all members of the Subcommittee. We met, I think, biweekly for at least the better part of the last year and then the last month or two, we've met almost weekly to to make sure that we got this to you. Thank you for for the extensions. I know we asked for a few extensions. You know, we found initially that the work was, there was quite a bit of work to be done. I think we feel like we have it in a very good place. If there are no further questions or or comments, we will move on. So last call for questions or comments. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Legistar 66384. Review and discuss the proposed transportation ordinance. I can take a brief introduction and then maybe Attorney Strange, who helped draft it, could share some info as well?
Yes, thank you, Alder Foster.
Great, thank you. So the the draft ordinance change in front of you tonight is have been in progress in one form or another for probably over a year before COVID. It took a pretty long pause during COVID and then has been worked on a fair amount over the last couple of months. So really, I think the key key items to call out in terms of what it does are probably three things. So one, it really seeks to clarify the kind of roles and duties of the Transportation Commission and and staff. And so it does that in essentially using a kind of more of like an adopted and flexible policy framework that would list out very specific items like installation of a stop sign and really, really clarifies these are the kinds of things that staff would be doing without Transportation Commission oversight, these are the kinds of things that should come to Transportation Commission. So that's, on the one hand, it does that. On the second hand, it clarifies the the rule over geometry approval and puts that squarely in those in the realm of Transportation Commission where the current ordinance has a recommendation for road geometry from the Transportation Commission and then Board of Public Works as the ultimate recommending body. And I think Attorney Strange can speak more to to that one. And then importantly, it also recommends combining the Transportation Commission and the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. And I think Attorney Strange also can kind of speak to the history of where where we are today with the two bodies, the tort process that went into recommending that. And I'm, I'll be happy to speak to some of the rationale behind why I personally came to feel that that's the the best organizational structure moving forward. And I think a number of folks that I've worked with in in drafting this have come to similar conclusions. So I think I'll leave it at that. And John, if you could maybe fill in the gaps a little bit, that'd be great.
You muted, John. Sorry about that. Well, good evening. And I think what I'll do is just kind of go through this draft so that you, for those of you familiar with your your own ordinance, whether you're on the commission or the board, can kind of see how they've been combined together. And just to, I have talked to some of you about the history of the Transportation Ordinance Rewrite Committee, but I'll go over briefly that just so that it kind of leads into this this particular proposal. But in three, three or four years ago, there used to be seven transportation-related boards, commissions and committees. And we went through about a year-long process to consolidate those down into two. Consolidation wasn't necessarily the reason that tort process started, but that's what resulted from it. And it was, it resulted in the creation of the board, which was intended to focus on policy and planning. And the commission, which was intended to focus on implementation or those acute issues that come up during the implementation of plans. And so during that process of consolidation, there were a variety of different structures that were discussed, some including four, four bodies, some including three bodies, some including two. And they also discussed the possibility of going down into one. The the discussion about going to one was essentially wanting to have a body that make, the reason for having two was to keep a body that was focused solely on policy. And then secondary to that, just a concern whether there would be enough time to get all the work done if they were in one. On the flip side of that, there was also discussion about how if you had just one body with everybody involved and the people that are involved in both policy and implementation would be able to bring that perspective to the to the execution of policy, to the creation of policy and the execution of implementation. And so what this proposal would do would be to reduce from back from two to one. So instead of a board and a commission, it would just be reconstituted into a single commission. And the and the reason I have this highlighted here is because you'll probably notice that this purpose section is primarily just pulled over from the existing TPPB ordinance. And then the highlighted portion is where it talks about the fact that the commission will have actually the dual responsibilities of both both policy and immediate issue oversight of the transportation system. The composition of the of the new commission would be 13 voting members. So whereas now each body has nine voting members and two alternates, the new commission would have 13 voting members and three alternates and including four members of the Common Council, eight residents of the city of Madison and maintaining that one regional representative who is currently on the board. The three alternates would be residents of the city. In the section here that involves the describes what the members are, you'll notice those that comes also primarily from the transportation, the existing Transportation Commission ordinance where it identifies those those members that, the description of those members that are going to be, would be on the commission. The one, the one mandatory member, things that we added were a member of the MPO Policy Board and a member of Sustainable Madison beyond the new new Transportation Commission. Otherwise, the the appointment and member composition sections remain largely the same as in the current ordinances. The the B, C and B, C, D and E on how those members are appointed also remain almost exactly as they currently exist in the TPPB. Role of the alternate members stays the same. And and again, the the appointment of those those members stays essentially the same in terms of terms and and their process. The executive secretary provision also remains the same as it is in the TPPB ordinance and the TC ordinance. It remains a director of transportation or the designee. You'll probably notice that we pulled out the alternating mechanism whereby the director gets to choose who's going to be the executive secretary. And then that has to alternate with only one body. It will either be the director or or the designee. Section five maintains the provision that's in the current TPPB ordinance relative to the possibility of a common council member serving as chair, co-person, co-chairperson or vice chairperson of the commission. That, as you know, is 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 not the way that there's currently in Section 33 a prohibition against that on our boards, commissions and committees. It was put in the existing TPPB ordinance because that that body was going to be Alder-heavy as a policymaking body. And so it was, it was, it was put in there with the acknowledgement that there were going to be more Alders than normal sitting on there and that focus was going to be on policy. And therefore, the policymakers at the time wanted to to allow an Alder to be the chair or vice chair of the body. The powers and duties section is really, again, sort of a mirage of the two existing ordinances. Tried to split it up into subsection 6A, which focuses on policies. And if you read through Roman numerals one through seven, you'll see that those are almost verbatim from the powers and duties of the TPPB. Subsection B is the is the section of is really the section that probably is changing the most in terms of how it's set up with respect to the current the current system currently in the Transportation Commission ordinance. You'll notice the three, three different divisions, the metro, parking and and traffic engineering. And each of those, that was designed to have those items that were listed in the Transportation Commission ordinance be the items that come to the Transportation Commission. And the idea at the time was to have those, that be a finite list of items that come to the commission with further implementation of items not in the list to be conducted by staff and the DOT. And so what you have basically is a structure where the ordinance in that case defines what comes to the, precisely what comes to the Transportation Commission. And if it's not listed there, theoretically, it wasn't supposed to come to the Transportation Commission. So there became questions about other things that weren't on the list that maybe should come to the commission. And so what this particular draft does or this system would do was was sort of flip that that scheme on its head and say that instead of listing the things that do come, we're going to say that 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 everything, any change related to the city's transportation system is going to come. And then leave the sort of administration of that, how that comes and the degree and when staff would bring those changes to the commission up to the policy documents to to sort of guide how that would work logistically. There's a couple, we did have a couple provisions here. And you may notice that this is like, may look slightly different than the draft that you have just this afternoon. I was looking through it and there were some inherent little things here or there. I thought it might sort of make sense more in this in this particular sort of structure, but all the words are the same. Some specific authorizations for the DOT to act without taking it to the commission. One would be, as Alder Foster was talking about, where the commission has specifically authorized the director, designee to make changes as in written policies. And so that basically is the commission coming together with staff and identifying those things that just simply don't need to come back or maybe need to come back on a on an abbreviated schedule. This isn't completely unprecedented in our ordinances. We do have some, we do have in the, in, for example, the the landmarks commission is is authorized to delegate authorization authorities to the preservation planner when it comes to historic preservation things. So there is, there is some, some existing precedent for having a system like this where the commission would sort of delegate those things that the staff would not be, need to bring back to the commission for approval. The other subsection two is those things that apply to actions related to day-to-day operations or routine maintenance. I think this was left in there just sort of as a confirmation that those things just by definition are changes. And so they really wouldn't fall under I-1 anyway, or some BI anyway. It's just that, that just to make clear that the things related to day-to-day maintenance and operations not constituting a change would not need to come. And then in number three there, that's sort of the emergency exception where for purposes of public health, safety and welfare, the director can just make any change to the system, making sure that things are safe for the users, provided that it comes back within 45 days of invitation. This was a sort of an arrangement that was created in primarily in COVID when during the pandemic, sort of early on, there were some things that the traffic engineer did related specifically to closing down streets to allow more space for bikes, where they just went ahead and did that. And then it was sort of brought to the commission after the fact for approval rather than sort of waiting to make those changes until the commission could get together and. C is the provision where we tried to address road construction projects to specifically kind of more more clearly explain kind of how the the jurisdiction works with respect to road construction projects. And I guess, starting with just sort of confirming and stating that the final authority for ultimately approving road construction projects lies with the Common Council, who has to approve and all of the documents and contracts and bidding that ends up going to the that ends up authorizing the project, including financing. And that the Board of Public Works makes a recommendation to the Common Council regarding that. And as Alder Foster was alluding to earlier, what this does is basically say that with respect to the part of the develop, the design and the design of the road construction project related to geometric designs, that the that the geometry portion of that is is to be decided by the planning commission. And then the Board of Public Works takes that, takes that geometry is is and can act on it in a particular way, either send it to the council and recommend approval, send it to the council and recommend against approval because they don't like the road geometry, or send it back to the Transportation Commission with concerns about the road geometry and and have the Transportation Commission take another look at it. And in in this section, there's also the ability for the the commission to provide that administrative approval authority to the director for some road constructions projects, I think with the idea that perhaps there there are a number of project or a number of kinds of designs where the commission can kind of grant that authority and then that's, that would be less items that would necessarily need to come back to the commission for specific approval. Subsection seven is the final decision section. So the reason this is in here is because in the Transportation Commission ordinance, as I said before, there's that finite list of items that come to the commission and those are considered to be final decisions, which is why we then have the appeal section in that in that ordinance. And so the question became, if we're going to sort of flip that on its head and say everything comes, well, does that mean that everything that the Transportation Commission does is a final decision subject to appeal? The problem with doing that is that the Transportation Policy and Planning Board doesn't have any final authority because ultimately all transportation policies and plans are. are approved by the council. So in order to sort of maintain that some level of final authority for the commission and yet not in in so that all of these items then don't have to go to the council for confirmation, we basically reproduced those lists that are in the current commission here, maintaining them as final decisions and then subject to appeal, just like the current transportation commission ordinance has it set out. The and so that's the main sort of attempt to kind of merge the two in terms of taking the two ordinance and moving it together. I did add at the bottom an effective date. One of the things that we ran into when we consolidated from seven bodies to two was just how do you do that without having a massive gap between when those bodies are eliminated and when the new bodies take effect? And so what basically I have here, and obviously this is open as all the risks would be open for discussion in terms of policy. But that essentially this ordinance would become effective upon appointment of the members to this particular transportation commission, at which point the existing board and commissions would be eliminated. And so there would be a whole nother appointment process as detailed earlier in the ordinance where the mayor would appoint and the council would confirm members to this commission. It wouldn't be an automatic transfer from either body to the new commission. There would be a new appointment process. And once that's done, then the existing bodies would 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 go away. So hopefully, there wouldn't be a a gap in the existence of of any transportation-related body. While while this takes effect. So that's the that's the attempt at merging the two into one, one transportation commission, taking what we have in both of those existing ordinances and sort of putting them together to create a a single body that does both policy and implementation work. So with that, Alder Foster, if you or anybody else has any anything to add or if anybody has questions, I can leave this up for a little bit or take it down, whatever you, whatever y'all prefer.
Right, questions for Attorney Strange? Or comments, feedback, anything that Alder Foster you'd like to add? I know TC Cherkovich, you were involved in a lot of these conversations as well. Alder, go ahead.
Yes, I would like either the Attorney Strange to speak to the section where it allows a an alder to serve as chair or chair person, chair or vice chair of a commission. Could you speak to that rationale, please?
Sorry about that. I want to take myself off mute for some reason tonight. The, as I said earlier, the section thirty-three point oh one of the ordinances prohibits alders from serving as chair or co-chair of the of any board commissioner committee. Obviously, there's a different rule for finance committee that's all alders. But but the but the the commission, when the torque went through all of the rewrites, the reason they decided to put this in initially for the Transportation Policy Planning Board is because it was intended to be an alder-heavy board. And in fact, previous iterations of the board contained even more than the current number of alders on there. So one of the ideas was sort of practical. That is, with so many alders on the board, it just creates a larger pool of people who are eligible to be the chair. So just in the sense of having the administration administration of the board, it would allow more bodies that could agree to be the chair. The second rationale for having that on the TPPB ordinance was that it was a policymaking body. In fact, a purely policymaking body. And so because alders are elected to do policy, there was there was rationale that that would it would be acceptable to have and beneficial to have an alder be a member of the chair of the TPPB. So this, as I said, this just brings that over. And I think whether or not you want to, you know, the policymakers want to keep this as a provision in this particular ordinance or not is is a simply a matter of policy and discussion. That, you know, the the same rationale could probably hold particularly for the the policy perspective, the policy part of the new transportation commission. But that's a discussion that certainly just allow you all to have and the policymakers on the council as they consider this.
Alder, did it answer your question?
So as a as a follow-up, um, this is just my understandability. Does this not give unprecedented control to to an alder who sits on this new constituted commission? As opposed to having a, when I say a layperson, a non alder to sit on this on this reconstituted commission?
Sure. Yeah, well, I mean, one of the, one of the roles of the chair is to to set the agenda and to obviously officiate the meetings. So to the extent that 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 gives control to the alder who is the chair, one could potentially make the argument that that's the case. I suppose another argument could be made, the opposite argument could be made, which is just that so long as the the body is the one that ultimately determines what goes on the agenda, either through, you know, voting as to what goes on the agenda or not, that that, you know, the the idea of control wouldn't get out of hand. But as I said, I think that's a discussion for the policymakers to have in terms of of what they're comfortable with in terms of the role that they believe that the that the chair plays with respect to boards, commissions and committees and whether there's a rationale for to treat the the new transportation commission any differently than it is treating all the other boards, commissions and committees. And so, as I said, when they, when the TPPB was created, it was created to be alder-heavy and strictly related to policy. And so those were the rationales that they used and certainly to justify the the departure from the the general rule. But certainly, that discussion could be had again within the context of this draft.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with my questions.
All right. Thank you. Harald, you're up next. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I think on the one hand, I'm very sympathetic to some of the problems that have probably driven this draft of resolution where it's like often really difficult to distinguish where does policy end and where does implementation begin? I think we've really seen this with BRT, for example, where like, you know, usually transportation commission hears from bus riders about bus stop changes, about which lines get what kind of service. BRT, you have TPPB talking about should the BRT line go around the square or not? Yeah, all of those questions. So I think it's really, it it was really difficult to make that distinction. And that's not to say that TPPB did not make good decisions or that, yeah, that that there was any issue with that. But yeah, I think that's just exemplifying that it really is difficult. On the other hand, I mean, I am wondering, and I would really like to hear from the people involved with this proposal. And I think that's also a question that the mayor has posed, like, how is the work going to get done on a very practical level? Because, I mean, right now TPPB changed to a twice a month schedule because there was too much on the agenda. TC has always been meeting twice a month. There have been additional subcommittees. And so, yeah, I'm wondering what the vision is for how that's going to work out in practice.
Alder Foster, I expect you to raise your hand to answer that. Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the the question. I would say that that question, that consideration is probably one that had me avoid proposing combining them for for quite a long amount of time. I think that is a real natural question. As I reflected on that and how it would, how it would be possible to do with one body, I think a few things jumped out at me. Number one, I think specifically thinking about, let's say, the last two years of TPPB, of which I have served as as co-chair and so also had a hand in agenda setting and trying to make sure that we were we were doing our charge. I think what I, you know, I would say there generally kind of two, two areas of work. So one is what I think I really would think of as as policy development. And then the other are the kinds of things that you actually just mentioned, Harald, that are in in many ways kind of feel like pseudo-transportation commission kind of items like BRT routing decisions or or some other similar items that that are almost on the verge of of implementation. But we kind of talked about them as planned, like the Wilson corridor plan. But essentially was a decision around roadway geometry that then the transportation commission kind of tripped over itself and said, okay, well, I guess we're just saying yes, whatever TPPB said. But on the policy development side, what I've seen over the course of time is that we've really struggled as a board to do policy development within our, within the board itself. So we've, you know, we've we've had different conversations. We get some presentations from staff, often not very robust conversation. It's all out. And so then that that work either continues at a staff level and really just a final, okay, here's a proposal, something like TDM, for example, where really the that happened within the policy board and it really was, you know, staff and a contractor. Or it was through a few members sort of working in a official or non-official subcommittee type environment to do that policy development work. So at the end of the day, I feel like if you look at like the the, all the topics that happened over the course of the last several years, the TPPB, a good chunk of them are conversations that are repeated at TC. So in spite of many attempts to not have that happen, think about Vision Zero, think about Complete Streets, they're either report repeated there or there's a real knowledge gap on the part of TC and we're saying, well, go watch all those conversations. So then TC members, even if theoretically you didn't have to attend it, you're either going to watch those discussions to actually know what's going on to be able to do your role on TC, or you're out of the loop. So between those two things, I think there's actually just a lot of wasted time, to be honest with you. And then on this, on the other hand, looking at transportation commission, I mean, that's where I think we've had a lot of really monster meetings. You know, it's it's interesting that in the last, you know, month or so, actually done, you know, very light agendas. I mean, a couple of canceled meetings and some pretty light things. So I think there's, there's very much like a variable and seasonal nature to that. And, you know, talking with like Chris Pedikowski, it's a lot of it's related to road construction projects and how many of those need to get turned through. And and so then that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that actually, and it's and it's not really represented in this ordinance. But what I think would really, what what should happen along with this ordinance change is that I think a lot of the really long conversations at Transportation Commission are often in in often related to road construction projects and often related to what I would call pretty technical components of that, like asking very specific questions about lane widths and and curvatures of the corners and ultimately things that I think, you know, in my conversations with engineering and TE staff, they're actually really appreciative of of those questions and of that dialogue that happens at TC and and almost always result in better projects at the end. But it also takes up a lot of time and it's stuff that is probably not really interesting to the general public and even to a number of the members of the commission themselves. And so what what has been kind of floated out there is one possibility would be to create really something, I think the example that was used is the DAT meetings for for land use projects. So this is a like a development assistance team, I think, is the what the acronym stands for. And it's a place where sort of future projects and proposed projects come and gets feedback from a number of different staff agencies that help inform the project before it's actually brought on a plan commission. And so the concept is to really do something similar and have Transportation Commission members be able to attend this this sort of a meeting that doesn't have any voting happening, doesn't actually make decisions about what especially policy decisions around geometry, anything like that. What would be this forum where some of that more detailed, technical and, you know, work that is of interest to some individuals and not to others could happen? So I guess, you know, short version of all that is, I think there's a lot of duplication of stuff. I think there's conversations that aren't really producing results. And then I think we would would be helpful to have this other venue that is DAT-like where these kind of this technical review can happen that would really help kind of refine projects so that by the time they come to Transportation Commission, those questions have been asked and answered and that's not happening in the in the meetings themselves.
All right, Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. A lot of what I was going to say was wrapped up in that. Let me think what I can add. Well, first of all, this this ordinance change does a lot to improve some some ambiguities with the patient commission and and those sorts of things. So I think there's a lot in here to think about. I'm still unsure how I feel about the the merger of the two bodies. I think the part of me that really that it appeals to is the the fact that I serve on both. And so I do see those inefficiencies and redundancies. And so I can see the appeal of of getting rid of some of that in the in the system. Still, it's a lot of work that's being done by two bodies and, you know, like the Traffic Humming Subcommittee. And and it's a lot to do with fewer people if the two bodies were were to be combined. And also, I think the mayor's point may be a good one, that it might be too much work for a lot of folks. Just trying to imagine how what is now often for four meetings a month can really be boiled down into so much less. I'm not sure. So I am kind of curious how folks who are maybe have a perspective of being on one body feel about that and how realistic it feels. And then I guess the only other thing that I would say is, one thing I'm wrestling with is how this body that, as you mentioned, has to sort of think through a lot of the very nitty-gritty design decisions and stuff like that. I know some of it might be taken out of the full meetings. But having to wrestle with those things at the same time that you're thinking about the bigger policy issues and often in the same meeting seems a little tricky to me. And it also raises questions about do the 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 tasks that the Transportation Commission currently handles, do those sort of swamp the policy aspect? Like, how much energy do folks have after the the dealing with the the very detailed transportation commission side of type of stuff? How much energy is left to think about policy? So does that, does one function swamp the other? And then to the question of the alder being able to serve as as co-chair, you know, if it isn't quite so much a a policy board anymore, does that make sense? So anyway, those are kinds of the sort of the thoughts that I'm bouncing around my head and I'm wondering if anyone else wants to weigh in on those types of things.
Alder Foster, was your hand up to respond?
Yeah, if I could.
Go ahead.
Good, good points and questions, Chris. I think two things I would point out. So one, this this question of like detailed implementation kind of stuff, then I like, can you even, can you have your mind or like switch your mind over to like big picture policy kind of stuff? I think that was really at the heart, in those four conversations, that was at the heart of why TPPB was created, why it was imagined. And I remember Alder Zeller was probably one of the the strongest proponents of that. And she specifically referenced that challenge that you just brought up in relation to plan commission, right? And said, hey, it's just there's so much stuff or just stuff's coming at us that we have to react to, we have to process it. And we never never feel like we have a chance to like get into the policy work. And so that was like, based on that experience, I think specifically, that was the whole point of having a separate policy body. My 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 thoughts about that are really two things. Number one, I mean, nothing says that those things have to happen during the same meetings. So, you know, one change that's happened with plan commission since Alder Zeller took the chairship there is that is that, you know, regular Plan Commission meetings are kind of similar to what they've always been. And then she has carved out, I, I think maybe like four meetings per year that are these times that are sort of special meetings, they're not dealing with any of those kinds of things. And they are that opportunity to have that kind of, all right, let's, let's do more policy kind of work in these meetings. So that's sort of, that's, that's one alternative of how things could be managed to address that. And I think, you know, when I, when I thought through this, I, I think, you know, if, if this model of having a separate policy board actually is the way to go, then my, my question would be, you know, why haven't we moved that way with the Plan Commission? And I, you know, so like theoretically, we could, that we could also have a Plan Commission that did the sort of, you know, just making decisions around specific projects and then have a separate like land use planning board that would work on ordinance changes and some of these bigger, you know, policy issues. And I, you know, when, when I start to think about that, well, why, why don't we go that route if that's really, you know, the way to go? It really just raises all these same issues that I've been seeing between having different members of a policy board and a, and a commission and the gaps that that creates. The other thing that I would, that I would say, and it's kind of also another answer to the question of capacity, again, related to policy development on the policy board. In my experience, it's basically either happened by staff or it's happened by the sort of these, these subgroups. And I think my experience recently with the traffic calming subcommittee, I mean, that was an example of members doing, I mean, essentially policy development. And I think ultimately that's what it's going to take. I mean, if we keep TDPB separate, I don't think we're going to be actually, I mean, I, I don't, I can't actually point to a single poll, like written policy, transportation policy that we actually recommended for approval since I've been on there. And, and anything that's sort of policy related, again, has been either things that staff have just sort of brought for us or consultants brought for us. And we're just basically voting to accept it or, you know, giving some opinions on it. But in terms of actual policy creation, there's been some really great conversations, but it hasn't actually formulated into written policy. So I just, I don't think that that format, that a board, a policy board has really given us the results that we were hoping for when it was created.
All right. Thank you, Alder Foster. So Bridget, you're up next. Before you begin, I have a puppy who's crying to go outside, so I'm going to sit away for a moment. And if you would, wouldn't mind stepping in if necessary for a few moments here. So Bridget, please go ahead.
Sure, thanks. I'm just wondering, so tonight on the agenda, I think it just talks about review and discuss. So what are the next steps for this, I guess, proposal? If somebody can articulate that, and Anne, I'm not sure if you're in a position to do that. And I guess I'll just put my comments out there maybe before we get an answer to that, but I would like to know. I do have concern if, you know, consolidation is put in place without a well-articulated plan for how the work would be divided up that, you know, it, it, it can be really difficult, I think, for, for some people, you know, myself included, to have a, you know, to, to, to do this sort of work as a volunteer. But I think it's important to include people who aren't necessarily a regular part of, you know, an elected official or a regular part of, you know, city government in opportunities like this for a variety of reasons. And, you know, if, you know, if the workload becomes such that it makes it difficult for folks to, to do that, then I think, I think that that's going to be lost. You know, either, you know, through people not necessarily being interested in serving or through turnover, et cetera. So I would, I guess, just say that I think that a lot more discussion needs to happen and you know, that, that I guess I would like to, you know, to make sure that we consider, you know, all the different aspects and, and purposes of committees, you know, where we do have members of the public sort of at large serving and making sure that, that folks can continue to do so, even if, for example, they're, they're not retired or, or employed in such a way that they have a lot of freedom with their time. So Anne, do you know what the next steps are here?
Yeah, no, I want John to talk about, I mean, we're just here with something that's just discussion purposes only. And I, I, I have kind of other people, everybody who has expressed. So a lot of the concerns that have been expressed this evening are ones that have been talked about and ones that really need to be talked about some more, I think, because clearly a lot of people have concerns about how, how this would work. So John, can you maybe talk about the, what, what we have before us this evening?
Sure. Yeah, this is a, I mean, this is a draft for discussion purposes tonight. It's not an actual formal ordinance draft that's been introduced into the legislative process. So essentially in order for it to move forward, then one of the alders would, would need to request to have it drafted into a formal ordinance and have it be introduced, at which point it would be referred out for public, you know, public for discussion. Certainly to the TC and to the TPPB and maybe to other bodies as well, before it would come back to the council for action. So really how quickly that goes and how quickly a formal ordinance would be introduced would be up to Alder Foster or any other alder who would want to sponsor it. Unlike the Plan Commission, the board, neither the board nor the Transportation Commission have the authority to sponsor an ordinance. And so it needs to come from a, from a policymaker to actually start the legislative process.
Say and answer your question, Bridget.
Yeah, I, I guess maybe we could hear from Grant, kind of what his thoughts are on where he'd like to see this go or, or how he'd like to see it proceed.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I mean, I really, my focus was to get it here in front of everybody tonight to start the conversation because I, as I said, I mean, I've been working on it for quite a while and I've had a lot of conversations with staff, with a few members of these bodies. And I recognize that these are really, you know, big and, and complicated questions. So I'm genuinely really interested in the feedback from everybody here tonight. The other thing that I want to do with it is a resident analysis. So I've reached out to staff to help facilitate that. Didn't want to get anything on the books until sharing it here and also offering opportunity from anybody of these bodies that would like to participate in that analysis. Cause I think there's some real, you know, potential questions and, and potential concerns that need to be reviewed and make sure that we have a really good understanding. I can do some of those things, Bridget. So that's another, another step that would need to happen before I would consider introducing it.
Right. Alder Furman, you're up next. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm struggling with, with, with combining the two, to be quite honest. I mean, I think one of the things that I'd like to get a better understanding from of is that, you know, the Plan Commission example is given that possibly we meet quarterly. I don't know how Transportation Policy Planning Board goes from meeting twice a month to meeting quarterly. Even if, even if we're not giving, even if you've, even if we believe the, the policy direction or, or creation or in choices and stuff that are happening, a Transportation Policy Planning Board isn't working great. If we were to spend quarterly going over policy, we're, we're filling, we, we're doing a very good job at Transportation Policy Planning Board of filling our two meetings a month. I don't know how you, how you then try to convert that to a quarterly basis. And if you try to put it in the regular meetings, I, I just think with TC, there's just, it's just too much work. And so I'm curious what, what the thoughts would be on, on how you would get that from twice a month to quarterly, the policy related stuff.
All right, Alder Foster.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's a fair question. I think it's worth some additional analysis. I think, you know, most of the things that I shared earlier are, is how I think that would happen. I think also, you know, that I, I think some of this discussion really prompted me. I'd like to go back and look at the RTD agendas and really get a handle on kind of what, what work you have done and accomplished through there. As I said, from like, it's my kind of rough recollections, the things where I actually remember like making decisions or recommendations were really around like, yeah, the BRT routing is a big one that, that stands out in my mind. And, you know, there's a couple of other things in there. And I guess I, those seem like things that could equally have happened via the Transportation Commission. That they could have gotten a, a presentation on here are the downtown alternatives here in the west, here in the east. And, and clearly that would have taken up time there. But I, I think I probably lean pretty heavily on the belief that we can actually reduce a lot of the time that's being spent currently at Transportation Commission. And then I think a lot of the other just really interesting discussions that we've had at TDPB and the agenda items that have sold up agendas. You know, I don't, I, I think perhaps they've been useful and they may be giving staff some, some interesting discussion. But generally speaking, I don't feel like they've actually led to policy development. So I think, I think that partly you've had interesting conversations, but in terms of have they accomplished policy development? And it, it doesn't seem like it has in my mind. So I guess, I'm not sure if I exactly answered your question, but that's, that's how I'm feeling about it.
All right, Denise, you're up next. Please go ahead.
Great. Thank you so much. So many of the issues that we deal with have fundamental equity and access at their core. And so one of the things that I'm curious about is in your conversations, if we're moving from 18 members, you know, we're moving from bigger membership to smaller membership in a combined body, then the voices of folks with lived experience are so vital to really holding that equity filter and knowing what it is that we're talking about from, from that lived experience. So as we decrease the number of people available, who could actually hold seats, I'm concerned about the impact that that has for representation on one single body. So I'm curious to know what kind of discussions happened around that to really preserve that, that commitment to representation and equity. And then I really appreciate Bridget's comments about the workload and especially if there are meetings that need to dribble into the daytime to be accomplished, that that by its nature could become more exclusionary for, you know, really having that, that more equitable representation. So if somebody can comment on discussions that you've had about equitable representation on a single body, I'd love to hear that.
Go ahead, Alder Foster. You're responding.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think excellent questions. I mean, I think a few points. One, I think we currently have four vacancies between the two bodies and that's we've probably been at that since I can remember. Maybe there's been a moment in time where it was a little bit less than that. And if you take all of the members that we do have currently and put them together, I think we're maybe like one or two over what is actually being proposed with the new body. So the, the new body is being proposed to actually be a larger one with, with alternates. And so in many ways, actually it would essentially preserve the, you know, the voices that we have today. But probably more importantly, you know, part of the, part of the issue and part of the rationale for proposing this is that on any given discussion, if it's at the board or if it's at the commission, is also excluding half of those voices, right? So we're having a discussion about road geometry, none of the voices from the policy and planning board are, are participating in that conversation. We're having a, a policy conversation. When we're having a policy conversation at the, at the policy board, the voices from Transportation Commission are not participating in, in theirs either. So I think the, the concept that, you know, yeah, between the two bodies, we, we potentially have one or two more members than we would in a combined body. I think in reality, you would have actually more voices in, in more conversations if they were all happening in one location. The other thing that I would point out is that, you know, participation from members of the public and from, from folks that are not members of the bodies is another, you know, critical way that we can get that, get those voices at the table. And I would say generally, we've had very, very little participation from members of the public at TDPB. We've had a lot more during Transportation Commission meetings. And I know I've heard very clearly from a lot of my residents that there's, they're just really confused about which body is which. And when I try and explain what's happening where, they're just always, I mean, I, I can explain it till I'm blue in the face and people just really struggle. So I think there are some additional issues with, with access to the, to, to being represented at those meetings, just because it's so inherently confusing. Even, even for the folks that are really paying a lot of close attention.
All right, Ken, you're up next. Please go ahead.
I think there's several things I wanted to say. One is that I think Grant's idea regarding the road geometry thing probably could be implemented without combining the two groups. I frankly think that would be a good idea because I think there are times where there's just a few people who really want to drill down on things. And I think probably the staff could work as well with that, that smaller group. So anyway, I, I think that's a good idea, but I don't think it requires combining the two. I think the listing of what goes to the Transportation Commission versus the TPB, probably after two years of trying to work this out and seeing how things sort of fall out, it's about time. And I don't mean that in a negative sense, but it's a timely thing to revise the ordinance to say, okay, these are the things that work themselves out on their own. These are the things that didn't work themselves on their own. Here's a list. And that would help clarify certain things. And I think the other thing is that we have to recognize that just like the pandemic is a unique time that made a lot of things. Both the BRT and the redesign of the routing are coming at a time. And I think Justin would probably agree. It goes from a time that it is totally policy stuff to eventually the buses get delivered and the drivers get in at five o'clock in the morning and you're operating the thing. And so at different points along the way, there will be times for the two groups to be involved, you know, sort of thing like ordering the buses. Well, you know, Transportation Commission for the last bazillion years has ordered the buses, you know? And it made sense. Somebody had to order the buses. And in the long term, it probably would be the implementation as you need more buses and all that. And, but I think that can be worked out in the most positive sense on an ad hoc basis with the two chairs in with Tom Lynch and Justin, as they say, this might be a thing for a joint meeting. I mean, not ordering the buses, but the issues of are we going in one direction or another as we implement the new routes and things like that? So my sense is probably two years is a time for, it's a time to make some adjustments. But it's possibly, and those adjustments could be made. And then in another two years, you can reflect and say, yeah, these adjustments still aren't working out. We really need to figure out a whole new design for how many committees there should be and things like that. So that's my statement. But I, I do think we have to recognize that a big part of this issue of who should be getting what on an agenda item is coming because we're pulling a really big elephant. You know, the BRT and the redesign, and I recognize those have to come together, but not to change the whole committee structure just because we have these big tasks ahead of us for the next couple of years. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Anne Kovach, you're up next. Please go ahead.
Thanks. Am I unmuted now? There we go. You know, I've been part of the leadership discussions where we started out talking about making modifications and adjustments to the Transportation Commission ordinance. And we talked about where does policy stop and implementation start? We talked about having to go to two TC meetings a month and either attend or, or watch the Transportation Transportation Policy and Planning Board meetings as well and and the duplication that we have there. And. And so this idea was brought forward. Generated by the Transportation Policy and Planning Board leadership. Should we consider merging them? We talked about how we could how we could do that, how we could make that happen. And the biggest concern that was expressed right up front was do we would we have capacity? Would there be enough time to get everything done? And so there were efforts made to try and figure out how to do that. The idea of working in subcommittees. The idea of the the staff technical advisory committee to look at the road projects, all great ideas. And I've 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 spent a lot of time doing soul searching because. You know, Bridget pointed out retired people. Well, I happen to be one of them. Only I haven't felt very retired for the past year because I've been working on this traffic calming subcommittee. And I have to tell you, it's exhausting. It is. And other folks on there, I bet you are thinking the same thing. So if we're going to expect policy work to be done. By a large enough subcommittee group and, you know, this, you know, Grant and and. Ken and Tom and others are hearing this for for the first time tonight because I've really been doing a lot of soul searching here for the past couple of weeks. If we're expecting policy work to be done in these subcommittee groups. It's exhausting. And so the points that have been made by Bridget and and Harold and by others, the the idea that. We're going to be able to keep people on this merged body is going to be hard because you're going to be going to. The full TC meetings, you're going to be going to those who are interested, going to the technical advisory meetings. Those who are interested are going to be going to subcommittee meetings. And it's just, you know, it's a lot to ask of people. And and so I I think it's we're getting just a ton of great feedback and. And I'd like us to to think, you know, could we make adjustments to the two bodies that we have today? Ken was talking about some. There've been a lot of suggestions made here today. And I thought myself, hey, maybe TC can have this staff technical advisory group. You know, I don't know why we couldn't start there right away. So could we make adjustments that can accomplish some of these things? And Harold, you made an observation when we had a conversation that. We don't have to actually go to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board meetings to know what's going on at TC. We can watch those meetings at our leisure because they're recorded. We can look at the handouts. So, you know, you don't have to attend a specifically scheduled meeting. So. There's a lot of great feedback that's been tossed out here that is is something that could help us, you know. Work to achieve the best way to accomplish everything. Because I am most concerned about capacity from two points of view, getting the work done. And and keeping those volunteers that are so important to getting the work done. So. You know, I'm I'm sort of rehashing what a lot of people have been saying, but it's something that's. Really been resonating with me over the course of the past couple of weeks. You know, how how can we address these these really big issues? So, thanks.
Thank you. Alder Furman, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair. Alder Foster said earlier, there was no, there's no representation of Transportation Policy Planning Board on TC. I just want to remind everybody, we obviously do have two members from Transportation Policy Planning Board that that are actual members of Transportation Commission that are going to those meetings. And as Ann pointed out, obviously, there's opportunities to watch things and read the handout. So. I think everybody knows that. I just wanted to at least make that clear again for the record. I think also I did want to point out the comparisons to the Plan Commission. One of those big differences between the the Department of Transportation and and the Planning Department is. Plan Commission and Planning Department has a lot of planners at their disposal that does, you know, outstanding, excellent, and and a lot of work on policy development. Department of Transportation, I believe, has one who retired. I'm not sure if they've actually been replaced. But that is an important point to point out that, you know, it's very hard to compare the two when, you know, Department of Transportation does not have. The planning staff that that the Plan Commission has at their at their disposal for for that policy development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Billy, you're up next. Just go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I've enjoyed the discussion this evening and actually I I while I. Kind of had heard rumblings that something was afoot. I had not seen this in this draft until just. This past weekend. So I've enjoyed listening to discussions and let me first off say that. Having served on the on the commission now. I can think I can count the number of times where we've had a split decision as far as voting. Probably maybe less than a half a dozen times. So whether an individual is an alternate or a full member, I guess it really doesn't, you know, that's not a. Big deal to me. I I a little bit curious as far as the membership. And I am more concerned as far as time. If it is all in one body, and I think that there's that's already been discussed plenty, so I won't address that. But. But getting members from the Plan Commission and Public Works, we currently do not have that, correct? That that's something. That is new to this to this ordinance. Is that is that right?
There is there is a Plan Commission member. There's one Plan Commission member.
On the on the.
TPBB.
Okay, so but. I didn't catch. I didn't hear.
Crossover member for Plan Commission as well as for the Board of Public Works currently.
Oh, on on. Okay, all right. Yeah, yeah, you you serve on both, right? Okay, yeah, I I'm. I have got mixed emotions. And I I think really right now I I'm thinking a lot like what Ann is talking about. I think maybe it's certainly time we could. We can tweak and see if we can try to. Do some adjustments to the to to at least the Transportation Commission can speak for TPBB, but. I think rather than. I don't think two years is enough really to figure out everything that that could be done to make it more make both bodies more efficient. So, thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. You're up next. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for the really great feedback and conversation. I think one. One maybe follow up that would be interesting. To pursue is a is a conversation around then I some somebody brought this up, but. Looking at this list of what is the domain of the Policy Board and the and the Commission. You know, I I I think as others have stated, well, you know, we've kind of we've we've got a sort of more or less sort of working definition that's that's been okay. I I really struggle with it, to be honest with you. And, you know, I I think. Like, so right now, there's the the fare free study. That's in front of TPBB and Transportation Commission is explicitly charged with setting fares for Metro. And so the concept is that, well, but it's a policy decision of whether we should have free train if the fare should be zero. But setting the fare at $2 versus $10 is implementation. And that there's not, it's not a policy decision to decide how much we should be charging people. The 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 BRT routing that I mentioned before or the the entire network redesign. I mean, this is like bread and butter Transportation Commission work normally is looking at our our metro routes. Having public hearings. And making making decisions on what are what our bus routes are. But now because we're doing a comprehensive review, that's somehow a policy matter and TPBB is leading. The metro redesign or the decisions around actual specific BRT routes. So, you know, if if we're going to maintain the two bodies, I think it'd be really helpful to dig into these questions because I I think it's. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, honestly. And having served on both bodies. I think that a number, again, that the the actual decisions that TPBB has made. In my opinion, have almost exclusively been items that probably should have been handled by the Transportation Commission. That the members of Transportation Commission are actually the ones that are used to that. They're used to hearing from members of the public. They're used to evaluating all these different things. You know, this the the question of running, closing State Street to to buses for the summer. That was Transportation Commission. And now the conversation around BRT on State Street, which is like basically extension of the same conversation. Well, that's for the Policy and Planning Board. And I mean, really, it it's it's nonsensical to me, to be honest with you. And and I think. The idea that it's simply that TC is implementation is a farce. If it were truly implementation and there weren't policy implications and they weren't policy decisions. Then they should just happen at a staff level. Every single time that the Transportation Commission recommends a geometry, it's making a policy decision. And there are very few, the idea that we're actually or that the Transportation Commission is implementing policy that's set by the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. As I said before, I I can't even think of one written policy that the TPBB has recommended and the council has adopted. So all we have to work off of are the are the, you know, the comp plan, stale master transportation plan. And the and these things that are just super high level. And so essentially, the Transportation Commission. Is making the policy decisions around how our transportation system is working, how it's evolving. So I I just I I kind of put that out there because. That wrestling with those questions, being the person that's been asked, okay, where do we refer this item? Oh, this is a budget item. Okay. Well, some people say, well, that should go to Transportation Commission because they're the ones that are that are doing all these like. Oh, we just got to order some tires. Well, that's always been TPC. People think that's transportation. That's not like a policy decision, but it's budget related. And as Attorney Strange will say, well, budget is policy. So like over and over and over again, we can come up with a list and separate these things, but. I I don't think it actually makes a lot of sense. And so I I perhaps that's a good follow up conversation for all of us to have is to actually dig into those conversations. And to come up with some consensus around what should go where and why we think so and and better define what does policy mean? And what is what is this quote implementation? Because that that really is completely at the heart of why I'm proposing this. Is I think we fabricated some separation that just makes absolutely no sense. And we can manage it and we can we can kind of split stuff and have two bodies working on stuff because there's so much stuff to do. But at the end of the day, there's just. We're not connecting the dots. And there's and there's real issues that I see. The Transportation Commission is not aware of important stuff that's getting in front of the board and vice versa. So. I I guess I put that out there as perhaps a a next step that we can dig into that conversation. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Yang, go ahead.
Thanks, Grant. You know, the reason that we ended up having the conversations is that we saw a lot of overlap between. The Transportation Commission and Transportation Policy and Planning Board. Many of the examples that you that you just discussed. And that's why I think it's it's interesting to note, we've had two joint meetings this year already. You know, the conversation we had on the Met Metro Transit Network redesign earlier was was a great example of having. That done here in front of both groups. And, you know, the fare free, I talked with Justin earlier and I, you know, Tom Wilson, I haven't talked with you about this, but we thought perhaps a joint meeting. Might be a a good way to to address that particular topic. So. You know, I think in the short term, using joint meetings is is a way that we can. Help address some of these issues, but I think that trying to better decide what goes where. Is is really where we started the conversation. And I think it's really good to continue having that conversation. Because I think there are still some pretty big challenges to overcome in terms of how much work there is. And, you know, how many people, volunteers, we might be driving away. If if we try and merge this into a body, that's just going to have too much work to try and get done. So. You know, I think refocusing the conversation perhaps a little bit. On, you know, what is policy and and what is implementation? And that's a tough. Going to be a tough conversation. We've started having those conversations and and it will be, you know, it's not easy, but. You know, I think that is the the way to to focus the next steps.
Thanks, Anne. Yang, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Tom. So I saw no hands being raised. By the members. So I'm just wondering if I can share some thoughts from a. Input from a staff that I heard. It's, yeah, I I think, you know, the focus has been on the combination of the two committees. If I can, you know, talk about the another aspect of it. I would like to provide some feedback from staff. Or should I wait till the conversation is done here?
I suppose without objection. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So so the feedback I want to provide is for the. Section six B. Transportation System Oversight. So, you know, we have been in conversation with, you know, on the potential. Orders have changed for quite a while now. I took over a year now. And but, you know, for the the latest version, the language, you know, we just saw a few days ago. So I haven't, you know, really got a lot of a. Feedback from a lot of my staff, but just from a, you know, a couple that who have got a chance to read this. I think there's some concerns about. You know, the. The morale for employees. You know, people are most our biggest asset. So we really want, you know, employees very empowered instead of micromanaged. So don't get me wrong. I think, you know, this, you know, the language is definitely much, much better than before. And we, you know, sit down with Alder Foster and other city staff. I agreed on this, you know, policy document. I think that's a, you know, a really good informant. However, you know, I think the solid is that, you know, whether we can maybe change the, if this move forward. And we change the language to be more to be something more positive. You know, for as we go through the. Sit down with a smaller group and listed all the tax, for example, traffic during dusk. And I go through each item to see which one should be staff and mission responsibility, which one should go to TC. I think everyone agreed at the end that, yes, some some of those definitely, you know, will be better go to TC. But the vast majority on the list. Really should be better be handled by staff, you know, for many different reasons. I, you know, we I think we should reflect that. So if, you know, the vast majority of items you handle by staff anyways. Maybe just to be just see that instead of saying that the the commission will oversee everything. Except, you know, these couple of things. So I think we will, you know, send a more positive message to our employees, you know, which I think is very important. You know, for them to find power to serve a public. But I, you know, I want to thank Alder Foster and others for already, you know, made a lot of improvements. Listening to our input on this, hopefully, you know, it can be better if this moves forward. Thank you.
I'm seeing Alder Furman, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. When we decide, I guess, which we will in a moment, asking for some sort of direction on on how this goes forward. Can we please make sure that staff is more involved? It sounds like. I don't know what their level of involvement was on rewriting this, but certainly important for for them to be more involved than than they have been. And if necessary, it should come back here and we can talk more about where some of the conflicts are, maybe in that, you know, a smaller group that's looking at this. But I really, you know, Yang brought up some stuff today. I want to really make sure that we're we're taking that into consideration. That doesn't mean we're just going to agree with all that. Or each and everything, but this board should should know a lot more about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Furman. I don't think there's an action that's being asked for this evening other than to give feedback. Well, let Alder Foster speak to it. So go Alder Foster.
Thanks. And perhaps, you know, Yang can help clarify this as well, but I. There's been an incredible amount of heart with staff on this and, you know, I perhaps there was a myth that there was not included in the attachments. The draft policy document that Yang was referring to. We actually have gone through and basically done a crosswalk of here are all the things. The transportation engineering, traffic engineering does. And went through and said, yep, this all these are, these are, many of them actually fall in the category of day to day operations. And so they were. Sort of duties of the department that that staff wanted clarity that. This doesn't mean that these things all have to start coming to the Transportation Commission, right? And so that the the concept, again, of using. That of having that document, having the Transportation Commission adopt that and have that be able to be a more fluid document so that. You don't, the the issue is if you start outlining, well, here are the. Ten or twenty or whatever the the duties of the Transportation Commission, you know, we had a. We had something come up with these automated robot delivery things. Well, it didn't say that that was in the purview of the Transportation Commission, so technically. It's not there because it wasn't listed. And so the idea is to be more broad and inclusive and then have that very detailed, specific. Very, very clear guidance that everybody can agree on that's passed and said, yep, these are all things that are within the the domain of staff. So they're actually, I mean. I I think Yang's just really referring to. they're actually, I mean, I, I think Yang's just really referring to some of the, the, maybe some of the language that ended up in here. And absolutely that's something that we can take a look at, but I, I just want, I don't want it there to be an impression that this, that there wasn't really close collaboration and work with staff on this because there was.
All right, go ahead, Yang.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just want a second, uh, auto faster, uh, confirm that, uh, uh, there has been not of a collaboration, uh, on that. And we spent a lot of time together talking about it. Yeah, I think we, you know, I think we all agree on, uh, the details, the specific items. Which one should go to TC? Which one, which one should be handled by staff? Uh, as Alder, uh, I'm mentioning, uh, I think, uh, my comment is, uh, you know, I, I heard from a, a couple of my, uh, staff members. When they look at this, you know, document, uh, first, uh, can I ask, uh, they have, they have that concern. They feel like, you know, uh, you know, they are professionals. They want to be respected and, uh, uh, valued, uh, you know, without looking into that document, that policy document, saying that actually, you know, vast majority that is a step, uh, staff decision. Uh, just looking at the language, I think they feel it'd be concerned. Uh, so that's why I'm thinking that, uh, if this is a move forward, uh, you know, let's put together on improving some of the languages. Um, uh, so that, uh, I think the first impression will be better, uh, for folks. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Yang. Um, are there any further comments or discussion on this item at this point? This obviously something we'll be seeing again in one form or another. All right. Sounds like there's quite a bit of feedback for those working on this. With no additional hands raised, we'll move on to our next item then, which is Legislature 66385. We're going to discuss the 2022 Transportation Department budget. Uh, Chair, Curry and Kovac, go ahead.
Yeah, we did not realize that Tom Lynch was not going to be, um, available this evening. So I would, um, suggest that we have a, a motion from somebody from the Transportation Commission, um, to refer this to a future Transportation Policy and Planning Board meeting. And then Tom, uh, perhaps you could consider doing the same, uh, with the Transportation, um, Policy and Planning Board so that we can um, have him available for, um, for this discussion.
Uh, thanks, Anne. Uh, Ken, go ahead.
No move.
Looks like a second from Harold.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So I'll do this as a, I'm, I'm sorry, Tom. I'll do the TC, then you can do the TPPB. Um, so we have a motion and a second. We'll assume a unanimous, uh, unanimous consent vote unless, uh, anyone is opposed. If so, please raise your hand. Ken, you want to pull yours down? Thanks. Okay. A motion is carried. Tom, I'll pass it back to you.
Uh, thanks, TC Chair Kovac. I'll, I'll go ahead.
I'll make the motion to refer this to a, uh, meet another meeting.
Thank you. Looks like a second from Randy.
Yes.
Thank you. Any, any discussion? All right. Seeing none, uh, we will also assume unanimous consent unless there's an objection. Uh, seeing no objections, that is unanimous for Transportation Policy and Planning Board as well. All right. Um, then we will move on to Legislature 66386, um, brief updates on the following, uh, let's talk streets and 20 is plenty.
Hey, sorry for a delay. Uh, went through a just a temperature in the office. Uh, it's very cold here. So, um, iranically for the summer. Um, uh, yeah. Um, so first, uh, your quick update on let's talk streets. So as you know, uh, let's talk streets, uh, is an engagement effort, uh, for many projects that we're working on. Uh, company green streets, uh, vision zero, uh, traffic calming and pedestrian bicycle enhancements. Uh, so, uh, you know, this project will really impact the way, uh, uh, the city makes decisions about streets in the future. Uh, you know, how they are designed, uh, who they serve, uh, how they are used and how to make them safer and better. Uh, so we really want to, you know, um, these future decisions be made, uh, you know, with the consideration of, uh, shared community values. Uh, so, uh, you know, we place a lot of, uh, effort, uh, on engaging the public and learning from them to see what they think. Um, so I'm having update that we launched, uh, the new website. Uh, it's called the, uh, city medicine.com, uh, talk streets. Uh, so very easy to remember. Uh, and we launched, uh, we did a launch event on June 15th and June 16th, uh, on different times of the day so that the more people can attend, uh, if they're interested. Uh, so at the event, um, we talk about the background, uh, providing information on, uh, uh, you know, the, the projects that I just mentioned. And we use the summer online, uh, tool, uh, it's called a pad lap, uh, which is an online post notes, uh, basically, uh, you know, to ask people, uh, quite a few questions. Uh, such as, uh, you know, what do they think the purpose of streets today? And, uh, you know, how do they like to change their purpose? Uh, what are things that they worry most, uh, on the streets? And what are the things that they value most on the streets? Uh, and they, they can change it. Uh, what's the one change that you really want to make? Um, so we heard a lot of, uh, you know, really good feedback, uh, on that. Uh, you know, based on that, we also, um, uh, developing an online survey so we can get a input from more people. Uh, you know, we did get, uh, um, uh, a total, uh, uh, 35, uh, people attending the, the event. Uh, but we really want to get a more, uh, inputs from many more people. Uh, so we set up an online survey, uh, you know, on the website I just mentioned. Uh, as of, uh, Friday, uh, we have about the 180 responses, um, uh, from a survey. But we are still wrapping up, uh, promotions for that. And hopefully we can get, uh, uh, many more, uh, inputs. Uh, we are also starting the targeted, uh, engagement. Uh, so we're already targeting, uh, you know, the voices we typically don't hear, uh, don't hear from, uh, such as young people. Uh, you know, people with disabilities, uh, and also people from, uh, underserved neighborhoods. Um, and we're thinking about using, uh, a mix of, uh, uh, tools, uh, such as walking meetings, um, focus survey, and also, you know, ask people to tell stories, some storytelling projects, uh, such as through video or store photos. Um, and we're planning to, um, uh, uh, provide a much more detailed updates, uh, to TPPB uh, in August, in August, at August 16 meetings. Uh, so we'll, uh, have more, uh, summary of the, uh, you know, server responses. Um, and, uh, you know, we can, uh, talk about some preliminary themes, uh, from walking engagement. Um, you know, the, the storytelling. Um, and we want to, uh, uh, get a guidance from TPPB on the, you know, phase two, uh, engaging plan. Uh, and maybe, uh, a little bit about the, uh, the model, uh, hierarchy that, uh, we're working with a consultant. Um, so that's, uh, a, a quick update, um, uh, let's talk streets. Uh, if, uh, I'm worried for any, any question on that. Uh, if not, I'm going to move on to 20 is plenty.
Looks like you can move on to 20th one.
All right. Uh, so for 2020 is plenty, uh, we also, uh, uh, finished the, the engagement website. Uh, so that's host observation zero, um, uh, website, uh, which has a, a lot of, uh, really good information there. Uh, so as, uh, uh, as you remember, uh, company commission approved the two neighborhoods for this year's phase one projects. Uh, the Tenny Napam neighborhood and also the Teresa, uh, Hamers, uh, Hammersley neighborhood. Uh, so we have, uh, uh, a met with, uh, the orders such as, uh, all the figure out code. So thank you for support uh, on that. And, uh, uh, come up with a plan for engagement. Uh, so right now, uh, staff are, um, uh, engaging with the neighborhoods. Uh, we'll have, uh, uh, information meetings, uh, uh, for the week of August 3rd, uh, for both neighborhoods. Uh, staff already attending some of the, uh, kind of the, there's a neighborhood meetings, uh, already. Um, but really have a kind of a, uh, 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 bigger meeting, uh, in early August. And, uh, we are working on logistics, uh, for implementation. Uh, and there's a plan is that a new speed limit what goes in effect on August, August 9th. So that, uh, by that time, we should get all the signing, uh, installed. Uh, we, uh, you know, also heard a lot of, uh, uh, really good guidance from, uh, uh, you know, both TPPB and, uh, TC, uh, you know, the importance of data. Uh, the, the before and after analysis, uh, even, even though that, uh, you know, some of data may be, uh, maybe random, but, uh, we want to see how, uh, things look like. Uh, so we started to collect, uh, before data, uh, on both speed and the volume, uh, uh, selected streets. Um, so we, as half of those data connection efforts already done, uh, the other half will be done, uh, very soon. Uh, so after the, uh, you know, uh, sometime into the project, we're going to do another data connection, uh, to do some, uh, have some comparison. Uh, so right now, uh, we are printing out the new spinning designs, uh, getting them made. Uh, also, uh, identifying locations where the new science should be, uh, installed. And, uh, doing one cause to, uh, 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 find the, you know, good locations with no conflicts with underground utilities, uh, for the new science to come in. Uh, that will take, uh, a little bit of time. Uh, but again, hopefully, um, everything will be installed by our smites. And that's when uh, those two neighborhoods start to enjoy the newest, uh, speed limit on all the neighborhood streets. Uh, so that's, uh, uh, update for 20 is plenty. Uh, any questions for me or any comments or guidance?
Any questions for Yang? All right. Thank you, Yang, for that update. Uh, seeing no hands raised. Uh, we'll move on to the last couple of things, um, action items from this joint meeting. Uh, Anne, go ahead.
I, I would like to see us just, um, follow up on the ones that, that we're already working on. Um, although hopefully we'll be done soon with the Traffic Calming Subcommittee, Safe Streets Madison. But I would like us to consider adding the Metro Transit Fare Study as something that we could work on together because of that overlap that has been addressed so many times, uh, this evening, um, with TC being responsible in the ordinance for setting fares for transit fares. Uh, it just makes sense to me to, um, consider adding that and, and, and perhaps the next joint meeting, you know, might, be something we want to work around when it would be appropriate to address the, uh, Metro Transit Fair Study. So not sure what other people think about that, but, you know, I'm happy to continue tracking the action items, but I would like us to consider adding that one.
Thanks, Anne. Harold, go ahead.
Can I ask a clarifying question around that? I'm always a little bit confused. There seems to be like the fair study, but then there's also the fair technology study and somehow it's sometimes they get mixed together. I mean, I think I watched TPPB meeting, but I'm still a little bit confused. I mean, it sounds like what Anne, you have just mentioned is specifically about setting fares. And that's, but that's separate from the fair technology.
Actually, I'm including both of them in there because they, they, at least Justin can clarify, but they seem to be coming together. And I don't, if Justin, if they continue to travel together, I would, I would like to see them both, uh, wrapped in. When I call it the fair study, I think that it encompasses both. So maybe you could clarify for me, Justin, if I'm wording that correctly?
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, the, the terminology probably hasn't been consistent, but, um, you know, there was originally a, a study around not charging fares at all. Um, and that kind of morphed into a fair options study, um, which included no fare plus, you know, various different kind of um, structural options for how we collect fares. Um, and so it's kind of all getting wrapped together, but um, essentially what we're bringing, um, to a public meeting on this, on Wednesday, as well as the public hearing in August, um, is around the, the way in which we collect fares, including, uh, kind of the which, which is part of the technology solution. So essentially what we're trying to get to is how do we scope the RFP, the RFP for that technology? When we put that out. But, um, it wouldn't change the base paramount, um, but it would change some about how the, you know, how passes work and things like that. So that's where it kind of gets into a gray area.
All right. Uh, Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I know as we heard at the beginning of this meeting, there's still some questions about, um, fare free transit. But, um, there was at least some work done by the city to look into that. So I'm curious what the proposal is that we would do, um, regarding that work.
So, yeah, so.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a question for Justin or Anne or where, where that proposal can come from. Yeah.
Uh, I, I can say from, from our side, you know, we're not recommending a fair free system. Um, and, you know, a large part of that is just there's no alternate funding source. So it resulted in us having to cut service in order to uh, provide that. Or conversely, if there were a new funding source, um, you know, I think from our research, we feel that would be better suited in adding more service rather than reducing fares on existing service. So for a lot of those reasons, that's why we're, we're not recommending a fair free system. Um, but, uh, and then we can get into details around what we are proposing or what we're suggesting, um, to move forward with on a, on a fair collection system. Um, essentially using an account-based system and various other methods to reduce barriers and improve speeds and things.
All right. So I guess, go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
I guess my question was, what's the proposal that these bodies would do from there? Are we proposing that we would do a, 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 a new fare free study? I'm just confused what wasn't the proposal that we would address this, uh, an upcoming joint meeting somehow?
Anne, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm, I'm just suggesting, Chris, that, um, the fair studies, whether it's fair free, um, how we collect fares. This is something that's going to have a public hearing and it, it really has, um, it, it crosses over between, between both TC and TPPB in terms of, uh, responsibility. Um, and has been one of those issues that we've talked about that seems to sort of blur together. Um, so, and Justin has been called the fair study, at least in, in what I've seen it. So whatever they bring forward, I guess I'm suggesting that Justin asked me earlier, does it need to come to both TC and TPPB? And that was, and it's unclear and is being studied by the city attorney's office, I think. So the easy solution from my way of looking at it is to just, you know, have it addressed at a joint meeting and, and then we, we all have an opportunity to see it and, and discuss it from, from all sides. Is that clarified for you, Chris, or not?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Uh, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not asking this to muddy up the works at all. Um, but I'm going to go back to something that was asked, asked by our first, uh, public commenter. Um, about the timing of, of this. Um, and raise the point that, um, I, my, my impression was that it was metro staff's intention to try to combine the bidding process for all of the IT, you know, for IT, for fare collection, for you know, uh, emergency communications, radio, blah, blah, blah. You know, all the different components of our system that technology now permits us to and suggest that we should, you know, be purchasing as a unit or at least be purchasing as a unit or at least coordinating those purchases so that the parts work together, so that we end up with, you know, compatible systems. So, Justin, if you could just speak a little bit to the, maybe the timing of the policy proposals and the actual bidding process and when we need to have these things happen to make it come together so we can improve our system.
Sure. So the, yeah, the original intent was to have everything under one contract umbrella, all of our technology systems. We ultimately through, you know, as our research, different vendors in the market and did a request for information from vendors. We started to see that was possible for everything except for fare collection. And that fare collection really needed to be a separate standalone contract. But we do still, and so the, the RFP for the technology pieces for everything excluding fares is out on the street right now. It went out a couple of weeks ago. The fare system, our goal is to put that on the street relatively soon, in the next few months. And so the timeline on that will be a bit shorter just because it's a bit simpler, which is saying something because it's not simple at all. But it's simpler than the other version, than the other suite of technologies. And so our goal would be that those two RFPs are kind of going in parallel and finishing at the same time. So that we're negotiating with both of the vendors at the same time. And we can build in any of the coordination aspects into each of their respective contracts. Even though they're not going to be in the same contract, we can hopefully negotiate in those details to make sure that the interface works correctly. So, Margaret, I think that's what you were referring to. And that's kind of why we like to move forward with the, with the fair information and public hearing now. And I think the, the first commenter referenced delaying that because of school availability. And that was brought up in the TPPV meeting and then to set the public hearing. And but ultimately, you know, the, the people that would be impacted by that, students and staff are largely on those unlimited ride passes through the university anyway. And so they're generally not interacting with the fare system in the same way as everyone else would anyway. So that's kind of the rationale that, that was given and, and okayed by the TPPV when we set that public hearing date.
Okay, yeah, I was in at the last TPPV meeting, so and I, I did want some, for myself, that clarification, you know, whether that was a rationale for, you know, moving forward quickly, whether the bidding process was impinging on the timing of, or the length, I guess, of a discussion of fare free versus fare charging for our future. So that clarifies for me. Thank you very much.
All right. Any further items to add to our current list of action items that we're tracking? If we can add things to this at any point as well. All right, seeing no hands raised, our last item then is Legislature 66388, timing and future agenda items for the next meeting. So based on a lot of the conversation today around, you know, possibility of combining or optimizing how the two bodies work together. It sounds like you may want to have more joint meetings than one or two a year. What are folks thinking? Anne, go ahead.
Thanks. I think we should just take them as, as we need them. And I think the idea, hopefully, if people are, are willing to consider having more than just one, which is what we originally started at, I think that if we end up with two or three during the year and it makes it more efficient for everybody and, you know, particularly the crossover members so that you don't end up hearing stuff at, at two, you know, twice. I think that we should just, you know, work very closely together between the leadership of both TC and TPPV and, and try not to have duplication and, and try and schedule the joint meetings where we have relevant topics that really apply, apply to both. So if, you know, maybe leave it open, Tom, till we see if, you know, if the fair study, if that seems to work as something that we could use for the next one, that, that, perhaps wait and see when that might come up.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be in touch later, perhaps we'll target later this year, October or something, if we have enough items. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify that, I mean, we already set a public hearing date for the fair study. So I don't, I mean, and I would expect that then, you know, there's going to be a decision that's, that we're looking for. So if, if that is one of the items that is wanting to be at a joint, then we probably shouldn't be looking at getting something on the books.
Thank you, Alder Foster, for reminding us of that. Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, I was assuming that the TC members could just listen to the, either sit in on the public hearing or watch it. And then maybe we could touch base, Tom, if, you know, when we see when the, the the decision needs to be made. And if a joint meeting works, great. If it doesn't, then we'll just have to talk about what the city attorney says about whether it needs to come to both bodies or not.
Thanks, Anne. All right, so Anne and I, we'll, we'll keep in touch on this. And if we find enough items that need to be on a, for a joint meeting, we'll get something scheduled. Agenda items will likely be a lot of the things that we've been tracking, you know, over the last couple of years. So if there are no further comments or discussion, I guess the TC can adjourn first and then we'll do TPPV.
Sure. Do we have a motion from the TC to adjourn? Harold, is there a second? Bill? So we have a motion in a second. Is there any objection to unanimous, unanimous, I can't even talk anymore, unanimous consent vote to adjourn? So please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, the TC is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
And for Transportation Policy and Planning Board, a motion by Alder Furman, second by Margaret. Is there any objection to recording unanimous consent on adjourning the meeting at this point? Seeing no hands raised, you use adjourned. Thank you, everyone.